I know, I can't. Too much of a talker for me.
And be honest, remember the way you go.
You tell me when you're ready. You ready? How do we know when we're on air? Oh, it's on right now. Okay. Okay, everyone. Thank you for your patience. We're going to go ahead and call this January 30th, 2024 special meeting of the city council for our goal setting retreats to order. And we will start with the role, Ms. Leonard, please.
Mayor Buck.
Here.
Councillors Winland.
Here.
Burdick.
Here.
Mbo.
Here.
Ralph.
Here.
Oregon.
Here.
And councillor Afkan is excused.
So we are recording this on Zoom and we have some community members joining us on Zoom. We have some community members and members of the city team here, which we appreciate. And then we'll upload this video to the YouTube channel. Yeah, when we're done. So we can watch it back over and over again. Okay. We'll turn things over to the city manager.
There are people who watch it. So just so y'all know, if they watched the entire four hours, I'm sorry that they don't have anything else to do. And I have some yard work at my home that needs, I'm kidding. So normally we spend a Saturday doing this. I appreciate you all being flexible and moving it. Because at the tail end of the ice storm, there wasn't much tank or gas left in the tank for city staff to do this. Also, this particular room had an HVAC problem during the ice storm. And it would have been like 45 degrees in this room, although we would have gotten it really, really fast. Um, both those of you who know me know that I like to start meetings with what I call work related good news. Now, we tried this exercise last year and you'll remember that five out of six of you were totally awesome. But I'm going to still start here because I think it's important as before we start planning ahead to take a quick look back. And I, I would like, uh, my job today, first of all, too, is to make sure everybody talks and everybody gets to talk. So please play along with me if I say, hey, hold your comment for just a minute so I can call on somebody else. But I, I would like it if we could spend the first five minutes of the retreat, or maybe six minutes of the retreat, thinking about what you as a, what we as a city or you as a council got done in 2023 that you're proud of. So something that you, one thing from each of you, you can't repeat each other that we did in 23 that we thought was amazing. We ought to be able to come up with six awesome things that the city did. I'm going to start with the mayor. So one thing that we did in 2023 that you are proud of.
That the city did?
Or the council.
Or the council. Well, I'll say the same thing I told the, the kids out at Lake Ridge Middle School. We broke ground on the habitat. I mean, well, habitat broke ground, but we helped facilitate that project.
Great. Councillor Ralph.
Are you sure you want to ask me a second?
I, I, I do want to ask you a second because if it goes wrong, I want to make sure I have other people to recover.
Look, I think our city staff and council have done an amazing job this year. I think, um, one of the, the things that, the one thing that sticks out in my mind as being, I'm extremely proud of is the skate park or receipt park. And I say that because it showed incredible, uh, like collaboration between different functions within the city, one finding money, one figuring out from operations and, and parks on how to split the thing up. You know, we, we went at it with a very avant garde approach, but with everybody aligned on getting it done. So that was pretty special.
Thank you. All right. Councillor Oregon's looking down, but let me call on her anyway. One thing in 2023 that you're proud of.
Well, I'm glad that we have kept our, um, urban community forest plan on track and everyone seems to be focused on it and, um, that we're still giving it the attention it deserves.
Hey, councillor Winland.
Lorac. Breaking ground. It's been a six year project for me and on council. And it's been a, um, probably a 10 year project for the city and the school district. So.
Great. Councillor Burdick.
I have two.
Oh, you can have one now and I'll come back to you.
Okay, um, I'll start with the, uh, the Pride Day event.
Oh, cool. All right, councillor Mbo.
So the, the North Anchor, which you know, yes.
All right. All right. All right, councillor Burdick, I'll let you go again and then I'll, uh, if there's anything else just incredibly missing, we'll do it. This is not, this is not supposed to capture everything, supposed to capture what you individually think. Go ahead.
I think, um, keeping apprised of what's going on, uh, at the local government level. So within the county as well as the state and the communications that we've been getting, I think has really improved over the last, actually a couple of years, but this year it's, you know, we're getting better and better each time.
Great. Anything obviously missing?
Well.
Go ahead, councillor Winland, and then I'll go over here.
I would just say that we got things accomplished.
Yeah, we're going to talk about that in just a second. So no, I think that's absolutely awesome. Councillor Ralph.
We continue to get along incredibly well. Each other.
Yeah.
Even when we disagree, I mean, I've never been happier to disagree or come out of disagreement with a smile on my face. But it's strange considering where we live. So that's right.
Okay.
Yeah. And I mean, we have, we should, we, you know, wastewater project. We spent a lot of time.
And yeah, but.
No, no, it's good. All right.
Well, we have 18 goals that we put on, so we're going to have 18.
Yeah. No. Okay. All right. Let's roll into next year. Okay. So, uh, Hooper, you ready to roll slides for me? Okay. So here, we just did the reflection. What we're going to spend the bulk of the time today talking about is the big picture goals, the eight big picture goals and just making sure we have them right. And then the initiatives that you want to work on. I will probably say 20 times. In fact, I should probably have somebody keep a tally. Last year we made, we picked, we had 20 council initiatives. We made significant project progress on 17. And actually I went back and looked at the last three years, last, the year before, guess what? 17, the year before that, 16. So the reason we do goal setting is not because the, uh, there aren't more things out there that we want to get done than, than we are currently doing. Because there always are. And in fact, if we actually had an agenda that didn't have a next year on it, it would be kind of a downer. If we didn't have other things we wanted to get done, most of us wouldn't be necessary, right? So I'm going to ask you several times in this conversation to choose, and I'm not asking you to choose never. I write this down every year for you. I, I'm not asking you to choose never. I'm asking you to think about what's your priority for the next 12 months. Okay. Because in a lot of cases, the work that you want to do does need to happen, but maybe some other work is higher priority. So this is all about prioritizing. Go to the next slide for me. Uh, we're going to use a voting tool, just like we have before. Um, I was going to say adoption will take place on February 16th, we, or 6th. We obviously didn't update this slide. Adoption will take place on February 20th because there's no way I can turn around what you do today by tomorrow at noon. Um, please don't deliberate texting. I think this is also a holdover from when we did this by Zoom. Um, and, uh, we are not live right now, but Carrie is recording and it will upload it later so the public can watch the goal setting session. Okay. So I also like to, to talk about sort of where does this fit in? The city has developed a mission, which is to cultivate an exceptional quality of life for everyone in our community. We talked to new employees, every single new employee who comes to work for the city about this. The words in it are incredibly deliberately chosen, cultivate. I think we must have spent six months talking about that verb. Exceptional for me is about the way people in the community feel about the community, but also the pride that the employees take and the quality of work they provide. And then for me, everyone is also a key word because we are not just here to serve the folks who are managed to show up on a Tuesday afternoon for goal setting, but all 41,000, uh, people who live in our community. We also have identified four values that reflect what we view as good performance by city employees. I'm not going to spend time on this, but I will say these values, I think, really reflect the culture of our organization and they help employees know when they're in the field or when they're at the front counter or when they're in the library or mow in a park, um, what it, what it really means to be a great city employee in Lake Oswego. Okay. We're not going to talk about these things today. They're really internally focused. Go ahead. What we're going to talk about is this body of work. So I think the other thing, those of you who've been around the city for a while know that we're all about alignment. We want to make sure that you all have a, a vision for the future of the community that's long range, that we're shooting towards, that we've picked the areas of focus that are the ones that are going to take us in that direction. And that the projects that we work on, which is what we're going to spend the bulk of our time talking about today, are ones that are moved, that are couched in our strategy and moving towards that future. Then there's a lot of stuff you don't see, uh, probably 90% of the work of the city you don't see, which is the tasks, the actions, the projects that city staff take to either implement your vision or your goals, or just to carry out the day to day functions of the organization. I also like to talk about the airplane analogy because I think it's a pretty good, um, way to reflect it, which is you guys, we need you. We need you to set the long term, uh, the 50,000 foot view of where we're headed as a community. We need you to have goals and we need you to allocate your time, um, your time, our staff resources and our financial resources on those priority action items that take you in the direction that you want to go. As we get into more of the detail work, obviously that is increasingly staff level work. Okay. All right. So just as a reminder, we're not going to spend time on this today. We will do this again next year because, uh, essentially you'll be a new council next year, even if all of you are back. Last year you spent quite a bit of time developing, uh, the vision statement. We, we haven't called it a vision statement because the comp plan has a vision statement that's much longer and more in depth. So you, you described this as the preferred future of the community, which I think really reflects, uh, the community that we aspire to be. All right. So the two things we are going to spend time about on today are your eight strategic goals. That's sort of where we're headed in the next three to five years. And then the initiatives, which are the, the things that actually are going to take up the council time, the projects, the policy choices, the things that you're actually going to do here in the dais. I think of them as some things that take usually between 12 and 24 months. It is rare that we accomplish an initiative in a single year. It does happen. But it is rare. There are normally more complex projects than that because by the time you guys conceive of them and then we develop a work plan for you, it just takes that amount of time. Wastewater Plant's a great example. It's been on the initiative list, I think, for the whole, this, this is our fifth year. It's just, you're going to do a lot of work on it. You're going to move it ahead, but yet it's a longer term project than that. Okay. Oh, they're already voting. So we are going to use a voting tool. Have you told them how to do the voting tool? Do they all know?
Oh.
Okay, same as last time. So we're going to use a voting tool. You guys are going to use your phones. In fact, I probably should have told you to bring your phones, but I count on you to do this. This is the one time on the dais when city staff are going to encourage you to use your phones. Your iPad will also work. Yeah. Your laptop might work too. Um, and the voting tool, you're not actually voting. It's a tool. It's going to help us organize our thoughts. Remember, you don't actually adopt the council goals until we bring them back for you in a regularly scheduled business meeting of a council. Okay. So here's the practice question. If I get more than seven votes, I know that's because some of you played, so don't play. Okay. Today is national, is it really National Cheese Lover's Day today? Wow. Well, given that this was scheduled for a different day, for January 20th, January 20th is actually National Cheese Lover's Day. And actually my favorite cheeses are not on this list. So I have to, it's a good thing.
I'm just glad that we didn't make this a, a dog, some sort of dog question. It seems typical of our city council.
I think we've done that before, haven't we? There's six.
Actually, national.
Actually, there are seven. And I know I said seven, but I think I should only have six.
America should not have.
It's a national question.
Did somebody vote twice? My math tells me somebody voted twice. Hooper, did you vote?
I think it was me.
Eric Ralph.
I think it was Mia. But I check out of this income here. So.
But that's how all those things got through. He's been voting twice.
Because there's no, there's none good cheese in among this.
I agree.
Yeah.
Okay.
There's no Manchego.
Revote.
Okay. We got it?
Point of order, chairman.
So you got him out on the second time? Okay. So you will recall, um, that over the last few years, you've had eight strategic goal areas. In the past few years, uh, there's been recommendations for changing most of them. This year I think we only have discussion on three of the strategic goals. So I'm just going to flash past the ones where nobody suggested a change. The first strategic goal was to ensure a safe, secure and prepared community, our public safety strategic goal. We've had it for a long time. Nobody suggested any changes to it. And one initiative was proposed. That one initiative, some of you, I just had a sidebar with the mayor. Some of you have proposed some sort of, um, directional elements of it. And so what we get done, well, actually at the end of this, you guys can have a little discussion about what do you mean by this goal? And this, uh, proposed council initiative is essentially, uh, the next step in the one that you had in place last year, which is that we are going to continue to work hard to increase the preparedness of our residents, especially the most vulnerable residents in the event of a disaster. Okay. So questions about this and any discussion? And I say, some of you had some directional elements you ought to have. I'm going to pause here and you can have some conversation about that. Go ahead, sir.
So I feel like that's very similar to what we have under our comeback climate change initiative.
Yeah.
It seems like they could be bucketed either in safety or in the, um, combat climate change and strengthening communities resilience.
I don't think it is the same, and I'll tell you why, because I think this is about prepare, emergency preparedness, no matter what the reason for the emergency might be. And I think a lot of the climate related work that we need to do is actually the city's own infrastructure.
Okay, that's fine. I just.
Does that make sense? I mean, when I think about the issues we have as a city related to infrastructure, um, water, stormwater and fire resiliency are the areas. Whereas here, this is really about folks knowing that if we, in the event of a big disaster, and I think we just recently relearned this, they're going to want things from the city the city can't provide. Cause we're, uh, we only are so big.
I couldn't agree with you more. I think, uh, I just wanted to make sure that we were, it wasn't.
No, I understand.
I couldn't agree more that there's stuff the city should do and can do. There's stuff the city can't do in those situations. And people need to be prepared to, like, we need to deal with an emergency right now. So.
No, I think it's just a minor badge emergency.
Okay, that's totally clear. Thank you.
If it was me, I would embarrass myself by doing that. So I'm glad somebody else had a chance to do it. All right. Anybody else? I, I think, um, the mayor had some, um, notions about the role of the 50 plus advisory board. And Ernest, you want to talk a little bit about your thoughts?
Well, yes, one thing I think we've done really well, uh, you know, Miss Falian in particular, is convening the, uh, city's emergency, you know, preparedness plan, working with the business community on their emergency preparedness plan, which is a great tool. Um, and then we've been attempting to do, and well, we've done really great outreach to many different facets of the community, but we don't have any kind of set community forum through which we talk about emergency preparedness. You know, we've been trying to get the neighborhoods on board with it and we held the roundtable about it. And anyway, to the challenge to get, you know, people. So we've been for some years trying to think about the 50 plus and they have been almost filling this role naturally. You know, talking about emergency preparedness, talking about housing security, um, uh, dealing with, with the needs of members of the community to go beyond just the senior community. So I thought, wow, what a great place to kind of couch this topic of emergency preparedness. And, and maybe it's an opportunity for us to kind of expand or, or redefine the role of that 50 plus, maybe even we rebrand it a little bit so we get a wider range of community members engaged in it. And so that was kind of my idea to, to connect the work we're doing with a community group who can help us move it forward.
I, I agree a hundred percent. I think the other part though is that there's the, the increase, the preparedness of Lake Oswego residents encompasses everyone, including like the school district, which, um, you know, the partnership we have with them, and I don't know if necessarily the 50 plus group is a natural alliance with that. But I think in the larger picture, we need to be, um, as we've said, defining roles. Uh, because as we've learned from some of the emails that we received, they wanted the city to, you know, basically, um, deliver them coffee. Um, and that's not our role.
I wouldn't have found that part, but they were hoping that we'd bring far. I don't want to get too deep in this.
No, but I think my point is, is that I, while I agree that it needs to, a home to sit in, I think it needs to be more at the strategic level of all the community partners working together and 50 plus doesn't have that.
You know, but it could, or I, I agree with councillor Winland. It, um, it's the having, it's the school district. It's other community groups like Hunger Fighters. I learned even during this last storm, some of our secure low income senior housing left alone.
Yeah.
No support, um, with no electricity. Um, so ways that we can bring all of those community players together in a forum around.
So I think this is, these are great work plan elements. And so I think what I'll try to do is capture some of your conversations so that the staff, people building the work plan. I guess I should have also remembered to say at the very beginning, we are going to go do an initial pass in this voting. What will, what will inevitably happen is you guys will have strong agreement on a lot of the work that you want to do. And so we're going to have an initial discussion now, but if there are stuff, if there's stuff on the bubble, it will come back at the end. And Megan, while you're taking, uh, this is going to keep score in terms of how you all rank it. Okay. Yes, sir.
But one thing that is not on our initiative list, and I don't, that's why I think it needs to be a strategic initiative, but it should be something that we always kind of keep top of mind in this bucket is how are we remaining nimble as a council and staff to the needs, staffing needs of fire and police? So if, you know, so I don't know, does it need to be initiative or not? I think that's something we just need to always be kind of aware of. Like if the chief, the fire or police chief comes and says, hey, look, we're shorthanded. We need some help. We're nimble enough under this initiative to make the decisions we need to do at, at those times.
It feels to me like we've done a pretty good job of that during the budget process. I mean, in, in the traditional budget process would be normally councillor.
Yes. I, I, I wanted to, you know, hit there, like what are the part? And we'll discuss that. I don't want to, I, I just want to take this opportunity to thank our city workers. During this emergency, what they did was exceptional, inspired people, whatever they think. I know what they did. But like in this goal, are we prepared? That's the question. Like, are we prepared? And how can we do be prepared? And what can we do to be prepared? And.
So, yeah, that's a great question. I mean, do you feel like this goal, the way it's stated? So remember, remember these initiatives are not everything you ever hoped and dreamed of. So things like, and I will say even out of the executive team conversation, we didn't elevate a discussion about, do we have adequate public safety staffing? So I'm not telling you it's not encompassed. I'm telling you that I'm not sure that we need counsel to spend its time here. Remember.
And that's why I worded it the way it was just like, are we nimble enough to?
No, I think we are. So I think the question for you is whether, for me back to you all is, does this capture your desire to make sure the city as an organization is prepared for emergencies? If it does, then I think we're, we're okay with the way it's put it. Okay. So this is how this is going to go. I don't want to spend too much time on this one because I think you're going to have strong agreement on this one. And we've got some ones later that are going to be harder. So the next thing we do here is we take a vote. Do you think this is something that the council should spend its time on in 2024? Go to the next slide, Anthony.
Oh, are you doing it?
Yeah.
Well, we might save. Can we reload?
Yeah, I don't see it.
Yep, got it. Okay.
Okay. One more. Did everybody get this? I'm glad we're doing an easy one to start.
Who's, who's?
Who's missing, Anthony?
It's me. I.
First he voted twice and then he didn't vote at all.
Long day.
Hope not. Get some steps to count.
It's. And plus something.
I think I should stay with my.
Yeah, whatever works. Thank you. Just one or the other.
Bing, 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 bing. Eight, nine, 10.
All right. Okay. So this is clearly something that will end up on your list. Okay. So let's go to the next goal area, which is the one around economic development. So this is a place where I had a councillor comment. You've had this strategic goal around business investment and job creation. Again, I think for about, I think this might be the fifth year. One of you asked a question about whether or not it's actionable by the city. And I think that's the question of, does the work the city does actually do the things that are created by the strategic goal? And I think this follow up question, and this was, is have we identified the right pro, strategic initiatives that move us in the direction of more business investment and job creation? Anybody have anything to say about that? Councillor Ralph.
Um, I think the news is last week about two massive companies wanting to move to Lake Oswego is proof enough that the things that we're doing at, at the city council level and strategic level are making a significant impact, uh, in this realm. I mean, it, it boils down to public safety. It boils down to our support of small businesses during storms or even the stuff we did during COVID. It's their ability to get our ability to have a rate staff to facilitate permitting and all those logistics things through the city. So to me, 100% is a street, is actionable for us. And it's actually.
Almost everything we do.
Everything we do. And it's, and it's actually coming to fruition in a very beautiful way and quite appropriate, timely, appropriate in the last couple of weeks. So yes.
Okay. Anybody disagree with that? I don't have you voting on these as we have in the past. Anybody disagree with that? That's sort of creating the conditions that, that enable a business investment and job creation is part of the city's work. Okay.
Yes.
Let us go to the initiatives. I'm going to just run down them and then I'm going to walk down them again. So let me just read them off to you and we'll walk down them and find out if count, if you have discussed. You don't have to talk about everyone. Again, when we get to climate, there's a lot there. Uh, the first one is, uh, and I like how you've all rephrased this as opposed to just continuing to guide North Anchor, break grant on North Anchor. The second one is the next step of work you identified last year related to urban renewal, which is to update Lake Grove Urban Renewal Plan and begin the work, uh, in support. So this is sort of a continuation of your existing work. The next one is the same as you've had for the last couple of years, which is to implement the initiatives in your, uh, 2022 economic development strategy. I guess this would be the second year we'd have the, the implement, um, focus. And then the next four are new proposals. The first one is to develop a funding strategy for the contract with the chamber. Because as you all know, we've used ARPA dollars and at the end of the three year pilot project, we will have to find other funding. The next is to create a long-term programming strategy for lodging tax dollars. I'll have you all talk about that in a second. The sixth is to develop an active and positive promotion strategy for businesses. I will say when I saw this, and you all can talk about this, first of all, I thought that might fit much more tightly under number three. But I also wonder if that's not also part of number four, as opposed to the city having a promotional strategy. I'm on number six. Uh, and then the last one came out of the exec team, which is discuss whether, how and, and whether to allow the, uh, the new emerging home based businesses where people are using their homes, renting out portions of their homes, um, as a business strategy. So Swimply is a company that allows you to rent your swimming pool, but also they have expanded into other home based amenities like pickleball courts, basketball court. Pure Space is a company that allows you to rent, uh, parts of your home for events. So you can rent your dining room or your backyard parties. Sniff Spot, I'm not too worried about, but just in case you're curious, Sniff Spot is a place that allows you to rent your yard for off, off leash dog areas. All of these businesses, all of these businesses, the issue is whether or not they disrupt the residential character of your neighborhood. We have had complaints about Swimply in particular, because people who rent their pools, you know, rent a pool for just you to go over to your neighbor's house and swim. You rent the pool to have a party. And so when folks are having a pool party for. And so when folks are having a pool party for five, six or seven days a week in your neighbor's house, it obviously affects your experience in your own home. So it's a question of, right now, we, we kind of do the best we can. Jessica's here. We try to use our existing home occupation regulations, which are all about impacts, primarily parking. Also noise, some noise, mostly about, yeah, preserving, and the problem is it's a very subjective standard about the residential. So we do the best we can to permit these businesses, but the regulations really are designed for you to have a home-based office, for you to have a home-based hair salon. They're not really designed for you to have pool parties. Okay. So anybody have any questions about that? I'm going to go back and have you guys talk about these one at a time.
Oh, well, I would like to make a gentle statement. I really think four, five and six are really subgroups of three.
So when they're, they're not in three. I, yeah.
I understand that, but when you're talking, I'm going back to your, your analogy of the sixty thousand, fifty thousand, forty thousand, you know.
I see what you're saying.
Three, or three is, is the sixty thousand, four, five and six are more at the thirty-five to fifty-five thousand level. And I think they're all parts of, or can be parts of an economic development strategy, even though it's not just tied just specifically to the Chamber of Commerce. It's a, I, I think all those are overlapping things that would not, I would not count those as major initiatives or goals of the, um, the four, five and six. I would say they all are part of three.
Okay. Anybody have a reaction? Uh, everyone have a reaction to this? I, I do think it'd be good for the council to have some conversation about the last sentence under four, which is, are you interested or willing to consider increasing business license fees? And I know the mayor's been waiting for like three years to bring this up. So I would actually ask him if he wants to make a statement about this one.
Well, I, I think most of you know, we, we haven't looked at the business license fees in Lake Oswego in five decades, maybe. And so they're just at a step with the rest of the region. We, we tend to charge too much for small businesses and not enough for the, for the larger ones. And as we've done this work with, um, the, uh, and, and we don't do, we send out, you know, one bill. You can pay the bill or you can not pay the bill. Nothing happens really either way. You pay it, it's great, money goes. And it's not really invested back into the business community. And just as a business owner myself, I'd rather pay even more um, and have it go towards something, go towards an investment that the city is making in economic development. So I thought this would be a logical way for the business community through the license fee to fund the work that, um, we're doing on, on economic development work and something that we could just look at. Actually, I was hoping you'd, you'd say something because, I mean, you're probably the best representative here to talk about small businesses. My only concern would be, and it's looking for your answers, I don't want anything, any changes to be a, be problematic for small businesses and business, in, in attracting businesses. If you say that you don't believe that will be the case, I'm totally supportive. I just don't want to change something that might hurt our, hurt our strategic plan going forward.
I, I think it would strengthen.
Right balance. Yeah. As long as we keep investing in the right, go back into that, not somewhere else.
Exactly, exactly. And it's, that's what goes around the, the business, um, promotion strategy. You know, um, taking that money and investing it back into the business community in a, in a cooperative way goes a long way. You get a lot, you know.
You think? Yeah, I'm, I'm, I, I think we need to either, um, effectively implement what we're doing or scrap it. And I think this is, but see, to me, this is fine tuning operations. It's not a huge goal. I, I'm, I look at this as, these are all just real, um, basic components. We could probably add five more onto this list that we're not necessarily thinking of, but it's going to accomplish the whole um, economic development strategy.
So just don't want us to come to the end of the contract and then not have money to continue the work and all of a sudden. We're sitting here like, where are we going to take the money from?
I mean, this is a funding mechanism to accomplish, right?
Yeah.
To accomplish number three is, it's a funding mechanism.
We just entered the second year of the contract, so it's a three-year pilot, so.
Was this a year to kind of figure it out then?
Right.
Well, or twenty-five, you have to have it figured out by the end of twenty-five.
And I think we all support the, the current, um, relationship between the chamber and the city as well as developing, um, an economic plan. Um, so I think, I think we're all on the same page that pretty much everything can be a goal on here.
So what I'm hearing, counselor, let me ask Council Verdict though, she, she's been, you know, giving me a meaningful glance for a while now. You just had that thought bubble. I saw that thought bubble.
I completely agree. I think, you know, it's important that we stay within kind of parity to the other cities around us in terms of our fees, but it sounds like we're not there. So I think there is growth and I also think it's important that when we're giving these dollars that we know what they're kind of. You know, I like when I'm paying my business license fee, that it's going towards kind of the business community aspect of the city. And that takes different, you know, you can look at that in different ways than what that is, but it is nice to know that that's kind of the, the objective.
Yeah. So I hear y'all sort of agreeing that number four, and I would say number six are part of that overall, are sort of how to. Uh, we're going to come back to item number five because I actually don't think you can delegate your authority over lodging tax dollars to anyone else. Uh, we are the ones responsible for compliance with state law and frankly, those dollars are programmed and haven't recovered from the pandemic. So I think there's this idea that somehow we're sitting on a big pile of unallocated lodging tax dollars. It's simply not the case. So, but we can come back and, and make a case for why you want to look at number five. I would say number five, you could do as part of, if you're going to later on have the goal about fiscal, doing a long view on fiscal stability, you could do it as part of that. If you'd like. What do y'all think of that? Okay.
We have no money to spend. Why are we dealing in?
Well, you've already allocated the funds that you have.
Why have it as a goal?
No, yeah, not certainly not. And it doesn't seem necessary for this year, but something to, for us to keep in mind as we add another hotel and, and hotel business continues to strengthen, um, you know, even the Lake Shore Inn redoing itself. Um, just to have some strategy around those dollars. Not that they haven't been well spent in the past on wonderful arts and.
What do you guys think about the, um, Wimply or Pure Space?
Steph put, Steph put it there because sooner or later it's coming. The question is, are you going to do it proactively or are you going to wait?
I'm of the mindset, but I can certainly be swayed that this is kind of one of those, you gotta let the market decide. And.
It's not that different than.
While I, while I, I agree that if someone is throwing a pool party five days a week next to me, I'd probably have a differing point of view. That's also an emotional reaction. Um, I don't feel, this is kind of an Aaron Raff going on a small government soapbox and maybe not something that we need to dive too eagerly into the pool. I apologize.
I'm sorry, there's a dollar penalty for bad puns and you'll be carried. Those butts will be.
Plan that. That was real.
No, I do think that this is a question of whether you're going to take it up. I don't, I'm not asking you to resolve it today. I'm not telling you you're going to impose regulations. I think this is a question of whether you're going to wait for neighbors to bring this to you as an issue that they're concerned about or whether you're going to be proactive. And again, not to tell you what your regulations are going to be. This is happening not just in Lake Oswego.
I think it's, to me, it's similar to like leaf blowers, not saying one, you know, decision one way or the other, but there's always going to be something that comes up that aggravates a certain part of the community. And the city cannot be the arbiter, is that right, of every single problem. That's my personal opinion. So.
What happens now if someone comes in and gets a, and tries to get a license to run a pool rental?
Do you want to answer that question?
So, uh, Jessica Moner, Community Development Director. So currently, um, in, in consultation with the city manager, we decided to put a moratorium of sorts on this type of home business because we believe that it's difficult to determine in a clear and objective way when someone is altering the residential character of the neighborhood. And, um, if, if there is a poster child, which I won't talk about here right now, I don't want to put, uh, any, it will be easy to identify, so I don't want to discuss that. But right now we have not been approving those business licenses, but we have in the past. And the way that we dealt with it is we approved them with a number of conditions, such as the, how many times that they can, um, have the, the events at their house. How many cars that are, they had, the parking has to be on the site, those types of things to address the impacts. But it is very, we just sort of had to make those up. We had to kind of determine what we thought was going to impact the residential character. So it's not, some people see that as not being very fair because it's not really in the code.
And I will also say that we know there are more of these operating, even though we have a moratorium on business license. We know because you can go on their website, um, that some of these businesses are operating. But unless we get a complaint from a neighbor, we are not proactively.
Are, are there home-based business types for which we have clear and objective standards? They come in?
I would say our home-based business, home mock standards are, are problematic because they are not clear and objective. So.
Any of these?
No, it's just you can't all, well, no, I wouldn't say that. No, some of them are, like, you can't have any outside employees. That's very clear and objective. Um, you can only use a certain percentage of the, the actual, um, home as, for that business. You can't use the hundred percent of the house for your business. It's, I think, twenty-five percent of the floor area. Um, and, and so that's clear and objective, but the one that, that people care about is not altering the residential character, which is not clear and objective.
It's always case by case then.
Poking and noise. And so I think what Jessica's making a case for is it's not just these sharing economy businesses that you might want to take a look at. It's all of your home lock standards.
Right. But the sharing one, I would say are the ones that have been the most problematic because it's really easy. Like when someone has a haircut business, you know, that you're not going to have twenty people there at one time.
Ever. Yeah.
Right. So you can manage the impacts of a traditional home occupation. These are non-traditional, many of which is about using your space for gatherings.
And what's the scale? How many folks have come and to get a permit for this kind of home sharing, this sharing economy type thing?
You know, uh, the other ones that we deal with are, are people who have like, um, personal training where they want to do personal training for a number of folks. So I would say if I were to wager a guess, it would probably be maybe ten over the past year. So it's not a ton. But again, we don't know, not everybody comes in for a business license as they should. Um, we encourage people to do that. Uh, but, uh, so we don't know how many out there are operating, but we have those kinds of businesses too, where they're, they're holding some things outdoor or they're holding group kind of events that can have impacts to neighbors. But it could, it could increase and it's, it's just an issue we've seen. That's why we were putting this forward.
How do you, for those situations that are problematic, you know, breaking the rules, not getting a permit? Neighbor complaints. How do you police it? Are you sending the chief's team out there to, to, so?
We have a study session planned for you on code enforcement because I think you are, you need to be asking questions about code enforcement. I, I mean, you remember the gentleman who came and talked to you about sign code enforcement? You have recently had somebody come visit you about short-term rental enforcement. We're going to update you. So the reality is we have a code enforcement process. Sometimes it works. Because we're really, I would call it a compliance process. Our emphasis is really to get people to comply with the code. But sometimes it doesn't work.
So that was going to be, that was my point, which is if we plan to make rules around this.
Yes.
We need to be prepared to enforce and that takes significant resources to do, time, money, people that aren't doing other things.
Again, I think I'm concerned, I, I think that I support the concern of the department on this because I do think that at least in the one case that Jessica has very wisely not talked about, a significant amount of staff work went into trying to resolve a, a pretty active neighborhood dispute. And the good news is it got cold.
They worked it out.
No, they didn't work it out. It got cold. They didn't work it out. We sent them to mediation.
Yeah.
It got cold and so the frequency, but it's coming back. I mean, unless, unless some of the players, unless the neighbors change, it's coming back. So it's a question of just whether you want to be in a reactive, and it's, it's fine. It's a policy choice to be in a reactive posture. But.
Well, the good thing is that it wouldn't have to be one of our goal count.
The bad thing is that means something else on the goal list would not get done.
We would still stay within eighteen.
Any more discussion of this item? Y'all understand what it is. I'm going to take you to the voting because I really am concerned about the climate stuff. I'm going to, okay, break ground on North Anchor. Anyone who does not read this very, very high also has to give Carrie a dollar. Who's missing?
Reload it, reload it.
It comes Anthony.
But so. So we have a slide for each one of those, but it.
Yeah, we used to have a slide, a thing about, go ahead and put this in somebody else's work plan. When we get to that part, if you guys vote low, we can talk about that later. So, okay, so there's North Anchor. The next one is urban renewal. Okay, that's six. Then next one is the economic development strategy. Okay, that's six. The next one is the one about a funding strategy for the chamber. And what I heard y'all say is that you want that to be part of the economic development strategy, not a standalone initiative. Is that right?
Right. I mean, it's a subset of that goal.
It's okay. So yeah, yeah, got it. Yeah. And then I'm still missing a vote. Okay, good. Uh, next one is the one about lodging tax, and I'm proposing to you that you put it in your fiscal look ahead, that we just identify lodging. I would, because I don't want you to come back and talk about it later, but that's just my own.
We don't have any money, so.
It's not that we don't have any. I hear what the mayor is saying, which is maybe we'll have more money after we get a new hotel.
Yeah.
Uh, okay. I do think that there's going to be, need to be, as part of the economic development strategy, a talk, a discussion about the, the events that the city funds. Cause we've funded several events and we'll have to talk about that. Uh, the next one is promotional strategy. Again, I've been thinking of this as part of the economic development strategy.
Yeah.
That, that we actually contract that out with the chamber, that we don't do that ourselves. City shouldn't do this. City could fund this, city shouldn't do this.
So I wanted.
Okay, that's six.
On this one.
Yeah.
My personal feeling is it's not our job to promote businesses. It's more of a chamber job, but so we should support the chamber. So that's why the flat, the previous question, that's why I'm doing low support here because it's.
Yeah, got it.
Okay.
And that's what I captured earlier on the flip chart. We'll incorporate that in terms of the, the work plan. All right. And then. What? Did somebody change their vote on this?
We don't want to do it.
We're enabling this, we're against the chamber all this.
All right. Okay, good. And then the next one is the one about home base, uh, sharing economy businesses. You want to take it up?
Should we get a?
That's funny. That's five. I need, okay. All right. All right. You did the economic development. Uh, the next one is your, uh, goal of being a welcoming and inclusive community. All right. No changes were recommended to this goal and there was one initiative identified. Uh, go ahead and go to the next slide. Which is essentially to continue the work that you're doing to implement the work plan that was developed back in twenty-one, twenty-one, that's right. Uh, and in prime, prioritizing service delivery, translation and interpretation, partnerships with O L S D and, uh, community engagement. Discussion.
I have a question. When does this, I'm all in favor of this. But I kind of feel like it's becoming part of our DNA in Lake Oswego, uh, in the sense that we have staffing, we have a lot of policy, we have, um, I mean, I've been working on this for six years, five years anyway. And we've, it's been a goal, um, but we've also done so many action items on this to set this up almost. I mean, it's, it's kind of like having one of our goals is to have a police department or a fire department. I mean, I feel like we have institutionalized D E I in almost everything. We have a boards and commission, or commission. Or we have, um, all kinds. I mean, we have a director. I mean, it's.
Let me get a reaction to that. This is really a po, a policy calling part of the council. It's been elevated by you, right?
If I can make, I think Councilwoman makes a, a good point in the sense that if it's always a goal, it's never a goal.
Right.
Right. So if we always have it on there, and then go for anything, it can be on any of these things. If we continue to have, um, the. Right? So if we always have it on there, and then go for anything, it can be on any of these things. If we continue to have um, the uh, safe and secure, prepared community, it's very similar. It's, if it's always there, I mean.
What's the action point?
Yeah, what's the action? Like, let's, let's either be specific. But it, it, just like ensure a safe, secure, prepared community, it's very generic. And if we continue to have it, it kind of loses its.
Okay, let's get a reaction to that. Uh, percent.
No, yeah, I just think we also have to stop talking about D E I inclusion as if it was something bad. And even this is some, it's a goal that has to be here permanently. If we remove this, we will never do it. This is, we are not an inclusive and all equitable community. We are tending to that. It's a work in progress. Everywhere in the world, it's what is it? You have to go, but we cannot remove it. And also I, people are also tired of hearing because people are tired of us talking about D E I. But we are tired of people telling us that they are tired of D E I because diversity, equity, inclusion is something that has to happen in any thriving community or we become not humans. If you wanna be human, we have to fo, focus on that. And that's for me, this is one of the most important goal because what are we as a community if we are not inclusive? If we, people who live among us don't thrive, what are we? What kind of community? So this is a goal that has to stay and you know, we have to enforce it to continue like that. It's a very important.
Counselor Verne. I uh, agree with uh, counselor and Boob. I think it needs to stay because oh, I think we've come a long way and we've, we've achieved a lot of our goals that we've set in place. I don't think it's part of our DNA yet. I think it's, it's still a work in process. I think we're still growing. We're still learning. We're still formalizing. We're still, there's a lot that still needs to go on to it. And this serves that this is an important direction that each of us, each of our departments, each of, you know, that we have to continue saying, what can we do? How can we do it better? And so forth. So I don't think, you know, maybe at some point, it doesn't have to be a goal, but I think it's too soon to take it off.
So what are the actual point? And I agree with you on this, but I guess um, I often look at goals as, okay, you've accomplished something. And we've been literally talking about this for six years. We have accomplished tremendous amount each year. So what are the actual items that you have in mind for us to do that? Yeah, what are the goal? I mean, what are we, what are we going to accomplish? Because.
I can respond to that.
We can talk all we want.
No, the goal post is very simple. We are heading. It's last year was the first year we flew the, the flag for the L G B T Q. That's not something we've ever done. So we, if we didn't talk about this, it would never happen.
So let me, let me do, to talk about this a little bit. No, I'm not, I'm not gonna let, I'm not gonna, I just wanna interrupt to sort of get square on his last year or the year before, your emphasis in this goal was around boards and commissions, and you did accomplish that. That's why, again, I think the D E I advisory board is telling you service delivery, translation, uh, and a welcoming event, which is the school district's idea that we think is really awesome and we'd like to help them with. Um, and then uh, a focus on community. There's four elements here, which would be the focus for the upcoming year. Whereas in the past, it's been cele, we had celebration events was a focus, which is where some of the community events were. One year it was boards. So you do have a, an area of focus proposed here. If you don't like that, obviously council, this is yours. So you should change it. But I think the D E I advisory board has done a relatively nice job. It's telling you what they think the body of work is.
My, my problem is only when it turns into something nebulous. And I don't, if we're gonna do it, it cannot, it can never be that, right? It's all. Like just like, it's just a generality. Let's be more elusive. No, I know. That's, that's why, that's why I'm saying.
Okay, let me go to counselor Corrigan because she hasn't talked to me. Let me, let me come back to you. I apologize, counselor, but I didn't, I didn't want to get too far off of counselor Wenzel's, Wenzel's specific question. Go ahead.
Anything that's vague is far less useful. So the words that I'm looking at right here that I think are extremely important to us are explore a partnership with Lake Oswego School District. That partnership is extremely important to us. And the school district has a very, very strong D E I program, and I would like to be in step with the same way that Lake Oswego School District does their D E I. I think that's, we need to be, we need to be coordinated and we need to be very clear about what we're doing. So I would really like to retain this.
Great. Thank you. All right, council of the booth. I'm sorry. Like I said, I'm sorry.
But I just want, like, what I want to say is, uh, and we haven't done it. There, non-hearing folks in our community, when we are doing our meetings, and to, do they hear us? They have to, they're part of this. Everywhere in the world now, when people are speaking, there's someone interpreting and it's all in D E I. It's making more people like all people. It means all people and all means all. So that's why I think this should continue and every year we can hit one, one target and consolidate because sometime by saying, oh, we won't put this in, we forget. But people that come should say that it's a normal thing that when city council is meeting the non-hearing, the hearing impaired folks would hear what we're saying. Or the people who don't speak even the language we are speaking and are part of the community should be able to know what we're saying. It's a it's important, like inclusion is that. And inclusion is also those fifty plus. Some of them felt they were not catering to during the storm. Neighbors should come knock on John's door and do, say that, hey? And how can we do it if the city? You know, coordinate all those events. That's how it can happen. How come the, we can talk with the city, the school district to have, to host this annual event welcoming of the new folks that come to our community that are lost. Sometime it's on next door that you hear them speaking. Oh, I just get here. I don't know what to do this. So all these are inclusion and access. These are very important things, I think, you know.
Well, I, I'm not disputing that they're not important, but I think you're talking the esoteric and I'm talking about actionable goals.
No, I am concrete. What I'm saying is not esoteric. It's people can hear me saying that this is what we wanna do. There are people who don't have access to city uh, services. Or who has, who need that access. That was not esoteric. It's a concrete example that we have. Hearing impaired folks. They're not part of the community, not hundred percent. They, I'm talking, they won't know what I'm saying. And they need to vote. Also, people with a wheelchair with some of our road, they are not part of the community. You can walk everywhere you want. There are folks who can't. Those are in, inclusion. These are, those are equity. Even in our schools, you go to Lake Ridge High School. The, some kids can go up to the, the, the bleachers and stuff, but if I have a wheelchair, I cannot be there. Why? My friends can be there and not me. So these are things that are continually, continuously, we have to implement this. We are human societies, we are not perfect. We are just making things. Lake Oswego is better this year than it was last year. It will be better next year than this year. That's the a government body, that's what we should strive to do, like make things better, but never be hundred percent satisfied. Lake Oswego is not that A plus type community. There is none in the world. We all are, when you talk about goal posts, that's the goal post, to be an A plus. Let's hit there, so.
Thank you. Okay, Mary, you haven't said anything. Everybody else.
Yeah, well, I, I concur. I mean, it's, it's, it's a, a goal that intersects really with all of our other goals. And I think in general, when we look at the whole goal list and all the strategic goals, they really expound are wha, what is most important to us, right? Public safety, it's parks, like everything that is important to us as a community is on here. So to me, diversity, equity, inclusion has to be a goal on here because it intersects with all the other work that we're doing. And it's not like, you know, a concrete goal like, like the North Anchor. We're gonna build it. It's gonna be done. It's gonna be off the goal list. This is something um, that um, uh, has to continue. And when we, I look at the strategic goal, fostering and welcoming an inclusive community, while we have come a long way, we still know that there are people in the community who do not feel welcome. We've seen it this last year, attacks on member people because of their racial background, their ethnic background, their religion, especially in light of global events, uh, continue to happen, or their sexuality, everything um, on a day-to-day basis. So this is important for community members and I think for staff within the city to see this as a goal, to know that we're gonna continue to prioritize it and that it needs to be top of mind in, in all of our day-to-day work.
Okay, so the, again, the initiative is.
Let me just say one more thing.
Yeah, go ahead.
You're all a hundred percent right. It needs to be something that is an evergreen. Evergreen, not ambition, uh, maybe it's an ambition, but you see, I was saying, it should be something evergreen within our strategic vision of Lake Oswego. And I think what Council Wenland and I are suggesting is this is, could, this is not therefore a goal, but it's our mission. Right. It should be, if it's something that we always want to have as a north star, it should never be a goal then.
It's a goal.
It should be part of our mission where it's, everything we do is tied to that north star. That's I think what the point is. It's not that we should forget about it. It's that it's an evergreen. Um, kind of what's the word I'm looking for? You know what I'm talking about?
Eternal, everlasting.
And that's fine, but.
I think right now we have good actions. I think we've also kind of included this in our vision and some of.
Well, it's already part of our mission.
It's part of the mission. It's part of the vision. It shows up in the values. I think here, again, for me, the question here is there's four, there's four bodies of work being proposed to you. One is around service delivery. And so for example, we just talked about code enforcement. I do think we need to have a conversation about how, right now, code enforcement and how, compliance, how we do, make those decisions. And it ought to have an equity lens on it. Um, the next one is translation. Which is a big deal.
Yep.
And an expensive deal. Um, the next one is the one around welcoming new residents. And that isn't just new, non-white new residents. It's about new residents. And the other is about um, public information about engaging with the city. So those are the four sort of areas of emphasis proposed. You guys can change those if you want to give feedback to us as your staff. But when the work plan comes back around here, it's gonna be wrapped around those four programmatic areas.
Good.
I, I hear what you're saying. I do believe that D E I folks should be working themselves on a job. But I also agree with Councilor Maboo that we're not there yet.
Well, I don't think they should. I mean, I don't, I don't think.
No, no, they should be working that. They should be getting us to the point where we all just, we all just have this in our, in our core.
Right.
Values and competencies, and we shouldn't have to emphasize it, but we're not quite there yet. Okay. Are we ready? Let's go.
Good conversation.
Yeah, no, it's awesome.
How do I refresh?
You can pull down.
Just say.
Yep.
No, I. I am a senior almost, so.
Yeah, the next area is our, this area. The next one is gonna take a while. All right. Okay, so before we do this area, this area is the one where I'm positive you're gonna have a long conversation. Do you want to break now or do you want to power through this and then?
You want to power and they want to break, break.
Oh, yeah.
Can we do like just five minutes? Long enough to go to the rest of you? Get a, uh, refreshing your, your refreshments? All right. Eat your cookie.
Been an hour, guys. This is.
Oh, I know. Everyone can hear me in Vancouver. Uh, on mic. All right, so the next goal area is the one we've had, and this strategic goal has also been in place for quite a long time. It actually started life as a sustainability goal and then a few years ago marked into a climate goal. Um, and the goal that you adopted last year was combat climate change and strengthen the community's resilience to climate impact. And I, we think that there's this long, this perpetuated um typo, which I promise I'll fix this year, which is, should say climate impact. There should be an S. Um, one of you suggested dropping essentially the first half of it because the majority of the citizen, the city's work that the bigger issue around reducing greenhouse gas emissions in the community is actually gonna be done at the federal and state level. And that really the focus on the council's part should be uh, the resilience part. So does anybody want to talk about that?
I'll, I'll, I'll jump in the pool headfirst on this one. Um. I think this is just wordplay. Um, I think if we, me personally, I agree with it because there's not much we can do at our level. It has to start at the state level. However, I do know the nature of our community, and if we eliminated the words climate change from our goals, there would probably be some e, angry emails. Um, to me, it is, they are just words. It's more about the actions we do that are the most important thing. So it's, it's one of these for me. Like, I don't really care.
Counselor Corrigan.
Well, if we, if we were gonna make look at it the other way, strengthen the community's resilience to climate impact really is emergency preparedness. Is it, or is there more to it?
You know, I don't think it is. And this is what I said before. I think that emergency preparedness is about the fact that there's a variety of things in the universe that can happen to you. And you need to be able to conduct your life. I mean, I just a giant power outage that could happen to you that has nothing to do with climate. On the other hand, there are some very real things, physical things that are going to take place in our world as a result of the change in the climate. More drought. More wildfire, more flooding. That, that require, that requires specific action on the part of the city. So for me, emergency preparedness is like when stuff happens, are you ready? It's reactive. If, I mean, it's being ready to be reactive. This is a much more proactive, like if you're gonna prioritize investments, we're gonna talk about some investments in a little while.
Right.
Um, if you're running them through a climate lens, you might make different choices than if you were just thinking about the universe as existed before. We started to notice what's actually happening with the climate. I mean, we, I, I feel like uh, in the U S, we've been talking about climate change in my adult life, but I think up until the last ten years, we haven't really experienced what that emerging climate is likely to be like.
Where in, okay, so the question is, do we eliminate the climate mitigation element? But this is strategic goal, says nothing about climate mitigation.
Yeah, it says combat climate change.
Okay, that's, that's what you made.
That's all the work that you do around things like trying to encourage transition to, from away from uh, fossil fuels to
Right.
Gas. I actually think a lot of the tree work um, actually is in that first half of the goal as opposed to on climate impact. Oh, actually, the tree work, the problem is there's work on both, both halves of that statement um, are related to the work that we do around the urban forest. So, but like all the E V work that we do um, right now, all the work you're doing around uh clean energy or the work that you have done and probably will do in the future, it all fits under the first half.
I don't see, like, for example, adopting and implementing an E V charging strategy. That is not, to me, resilience.
Correct.
That is climate mitigation.
Yeah.
Or climate impact mitigation.
Yeah, yeah.
So I.
I think we leave it.
I think you leave it, honestly. If, if, if I'm looking at our proposed initiatives, I think you gotta leave it.
Okay.
But again, we're not fixing it. We can't fix anything. We can't like, I mean, there are certain things we can and can't do.
Not alone, right? Like the bigger impacts are happening at a global level. All right, does everybody, can everyone live with that? I'm not asking you if you necessarily agree with it. Can you all live? Okay, so we're leaving. All right, so now I'm gonna roll into the initiatives. I'm gonna do the same thing I did before, which is I'm just gonna walk through them, then I'm gonna come back and let you talk about them. Because there's a few in here I think you probably need to talk. The first one is uh, similar to the one that you had last year, which is to make sure that we're actually using uh, climate lens and resilient strategies into our actual projects. Here's where the C I P shows up. Again, I told you that climate resilience requires you to think about the investments you're making in a different way. Um, housing policy was really about our work with the legislatures, I, I believe. Um, and then of course, the decisions that we make about our buildings and about our fleet. Uh, again, this is a sec, it's sort of the next step in the work that you adopted last year. The next one is educate, uh, engage residents around strategies to increase clean energy use and energy efficiency decisions. This is really a lot of the work that we've done around electrification. You remember a couple of years ago, you guys had a goal about clean energy and we found that really probably the biggest win in the community would be around solar. Also, you have the stuff coming from P G E around green energy tariffs that would all fit underneath this, this particular initiative. The next one is essentially the next step, step in trees, um, which is to adopt the urban enforcement, uh, urban and community enforcement plan that you're in the middle of developing. And then to begin implementing it. Uh, especially the non-regulatory elements and then starting the process for, it's sort of the acknowledgement as we started off two years ago that first you do this work and then you do the policy work and then you have to. That first you do this work and then you do the policy work and then you have to update tree code. Uh, the next one is to lead a process to accelerate the transition from gas-powered lawn equipment for residents and private landscaping businesses. Several of you proposed different elements of this. I'm not telling you what the answer will be because I think it's too soon, soon to say. I think the question is, do you want to take on this body of work? Um. And I think as you may all know, Steve Portland is going to be considering an ordinance in March or April of this year. The next one is adopt and implement an EV charging strategy. And then last is the update, the development code to require EV charging and new multifamily construction. And let me put a small point on this one, which is the climate-friendly and equitable communities rulemaking already requires multifamily construction to be EV ready. Give you ready.
Yeah, that's already.
Yeah, when I saw this one come in, first thing I talked about Jessica and Amanda about it, the CPEC rules require multifamily to be EV ready. It doesn't require the, the developer to actually install the charging. You guys can decide whether this is of this, of this suite of environmental um, initiatives, whether this is the one you want to take up. This one seems the most narrow to me, but that's just, that's just me. Okay. So I'm going to walk down them and let you talk about them and then we'll vote. Okay, the first one is essentially the next step in the climate strategy. Anybody have comments on that?
Can you talk to us a little bit about what exactly, this kind of goes back to our other comments. Like this seems like things hopefully we're just integrating into the work.
Yeah, I think it's going to require your leadership because I think there's dollars in play here.
Right.
And again, I feel like um. Particularly around CIP and Erica sitting behind me. So you just watch Erica while I talk and see what she does. Okay, because this will give you a clue. I think lots of times um. Trying to figure out what the appropriate investment is that's climate friendly or climate resilient. It isn't always obvious. And I also think sometimes uh. The places where we have money available and the projects that we need to do to be better climate resilient are, they don't necessarily line up. Like, I'll give you my favorite example, which is stormwater infrastructure. We have tens of millions of dollars of stormwater infrastructure missing in the community because of the way the community developed over time. If we were really designing though for climate resilience. We, we really probably have to build a lot more stormwater infrastructure than we've conceived of. So I think there, there's, there's a lot of choices in here for you. And I think if you, if you're really interested in pursuing this. You just need to know that your political leadership is going to be required on these policy choices. City facilities and fleet decisions. I think that's more you, you guys giving guidance to us that you want climate. And sustainability to be incorporated. I, I mean, we don't have a building policy right now. We're in the process of developing it. We don't actually have a fleet policy right now. We're in the process of developing. Yeah, we don't. There's a lot of things like it's.
Okay, but we've been talking about this for, again, I, I've been on council now. This is your number six and. I, I, I mean, I remember Joe talking about it when he was on council, twelve, fifteen, eighteen, twenty-two years ago. So I, I, I guess I'm going a little bit in this where um.
Why haven't we made more progress?
Well, why does this have to be a goal when it's already been stated that this is kind of the um, direction that we've been going in? And I, I look at sustainability group, um, not to get, go too far down, but. Number two, I mean, that's exactly what, to me, the Sustainability Advisory Committee and uh. The ELO Sustainability Network has been working on for years. And I mean, to me, I think that's already integrated into what we're doing. Now, maybe we need to have a performance evaluation. It's not a goal, but just to say, how are we doing on that? Um, just like we, we had a police review on how are we doing police stops? Okay, well, you have a report for it. Maybe we need a report from staff to say, hey, how is that? Um, goal that we've had for a long time of, of educating residents and businesses to increase clean energy use and make energy efficiency decisions. I, I guess I, because we have it as a goal again, I mean, okay, great. Maybe we just need to monitor ourselves because to me, that's an integrated. Part of, of the city's DNA. And frankly, I thought we had the fleet. I thought we were always buying electric cars and I thought city facilities, we always evaluated the climate um, or um. Uh, efficiency on, on energy. Um, we've always had that discussion. We haven't said that it has to be because sometimes it may cost far more than what we can afford. But, you know.
I think you just articulated the reason why if it's not a council goal, I mean, to just be completely candid with you. All of these investments require increased financial support. And right now, the question is, what's the political trade-off that the council wants to make?
I'm going to use my favorite word that I've already used, I think twice, is nebulous. Like these first two is just nebulous. They're not, if goals are supposed to be specific. And these aren't specific. And I think to Counsel Wenland's point, I think these aren't goals and they, there's something to be, should always be doing.
Okay, reactions to that, sir?
Yeah, no, yeah, I just think, you know, it's, it's well written to integrate climate action in, and it should. Everything we are doing when we are building, when we build this thing, Anthony did a great job over there even at the facility to know. We are building this, but we know climate is changing. This is what we should do. We have solar panel up there. This is an example. This is clear. Now our fleet, we also have to buy. Like what you say is very clear. We are not billionaire city where we can do whatever we want, but whenever possible. If we are changing a police car, we should buy an EV car. If you, yeah, I mean, when I'm not saying that we come and buy all. Probably cheap would be very happy if you could buy all the, we can't, but we go. You know, it's small steps, but these steps will make the way. You know, we make our way while walking, but if you don't walk, we won't make way.
Uh, again, this is really a question about whether you guys want to spend your time on this or not.
What, how would our time be spent?
Yeah.
Uh, you have spent time on these things in a variety of ways. Without maybe even knowing you're doing it. Conversation you had about the wastewater plant, about what is the trade-off between sustainability initiatives? And financial cost of projects. But right now. I know I'm on Zoom. I know I have an audience. To be candid, if you guys don't pick this project, I got nothing in terms of enforcing that. You can, this cannot be unspoken.
We hear you. Can, 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 what, what, is there a way to craft this into a um. Uh, an integration that, that becomes kind of ingrained so that we don't have to have fleet decisions every year that we make the policy that it's something that we're looking at the buildings? Is that? That kind of group, Council, what?
I think what you're saying is can we adopt the city facilities and fleet policy? As opposed to having it up there about integrating it.
So every year the council doesn't have to say.
Right, I get you.
Specificity.
Yeah. Can you rewrite this one to be more specific? We can give you a proposal back, but I'm going to say again, if you don't make this a priority, it won't be.
Yeah, we hear.
But wait, 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 but I, okay, I'm still going back to it. So we're the policymakers. I understand that, but you're the manager. So, I mean, I, I, I look at this as it's been. To me, pretty evident that we've had this sustainability advisory panel um, or board. We've, we've talked about different projects, whatever. To me, this is a management implementation standpoint versus, I mean, it's. I think it's part of our DNA in our city personally.
Yes and no. I think we're getting there, but we do have trade-offs when it comes in terms of costs. Like we've had to talk about with the wastewater treatment plant. What are the options in terms of sustainable actions we can take within that building? Which ones are we able to do now? Which ones do we maybe can't implement, but we want to be ready for? Those are the discussions that still have to happen because we don't have unlimited funds.
Yeah, but that.
It, it's, I think to sit there and throw it and say, well, it's all on, you know, the city manager or other city staff to figure that out. I don't think it's fair. And I think we need to say, hey, yeah, this is important, but we understand that there are going to be trade-offs at times and we. Sitting up here need to be ready to make those decisions.
Well, absolutely, but we do make those decisions based on, on what's presented before us.
Part of it because that's here. That's why we need to have it here.
But if it's not here, we won't, we won't make it. It has to be here. That's it. If we forget it, but if we say. I agree with Counselor verdict that we, it has to be here. We make it a goal and the goal is. The manager knows if I tell uh, city manager, you have to buy five electric car for the. Police is no, the budget doesn't allow.
Or in the case of the police department, maybe the technology hasn't actually met the performance standard yet. And I guess that's the other thing I will tell you about this goal is that it is not ever going to be one and done. Because all of the issues around the tech and the types of investments you're going to make are going to be continuously changing.
I think, I think that's why my problem stems from integrate the first line, integrate climate action, resilient residency, because it's almost too inclusive of everything. And it's not appropriate in every situation. Police cars being a great example of performance, you know. But I think what we do, the reason I'm saying it either needs to be si- specific or not in there is in this specific example. It's in all six of our DNAs, seven, including Ali who's not here, to always think about how we integrate uh, climate action strategies into the decisions we make. And I think one is a moot point because we do that naturally.
But if it's not there, yeah, it's about other folks coming.
But this is about us. This is about our goal.
But it's also about what we're saying to staff.
Yeah.
So by having it here, we're saying to staff, we want to see those options. We want to see what those trade-offs are. We understand. That maybe the technology isn't there right now, but you know what? Maybe in a year or two, it is going to be there. We understand that because. You know, electric replies obviously on electric and in an emergency, you might not have power and you don't want your generators being used to do that, that we might need to have a hybrid or have a few vehicles that are not electric. We need to be able to come in and do that.
So I go back though, is this a city council goal or a city staff management goal?
But.
That feels to me, that's not our goal.
But no, but because we are the leaders of the budget, we are the leaders of those decisions. We are the ones saying, spend the money like this or that, that. That's why it's, it's our goal because we are the ones who come and we approve those budgets.
Okay, then let me just, and I agree with you, but let me say this then. Do I need to tell the fire department all the goals that they're supposed to do as well each, each year? And the police department and the public works and the, I mean, I'm kind of.
But if we didn't have the, the, the goal here to say, you know, let's focus on EV, let's do some of these, let's build buildings that are more sustainable. They could choose not to.
Or if you had a perceived service problem, I would say, I actually do think that if you had a perceived service problem with the fire department, if you felt like, say, our response times weren't effective. Or we were losing a whole class of folks, or if we had something happen nationally like you had in 2020 with. George Floyd and you just had a public demand that we do a deep examination. And you have done an examination of the activities of the fire department as a council that has been a goal. You have done that. I think you would take it up. And all I'm trying to tell you here is we're not, I, I hear what you're saying is it should be baked into our DNA. I'm telling you, it's not. And if, and uh. And it's not for a lot of great reasons. It's, our folks are so focused on service delivery outcomes. Our folks are so focused on stretching every dollar as far as they can. That there's a lot of great reasons why you're basically adding another and different priority. So it's, it's up to you, obviously, of the council.
That it's.
I hear what.
I do not believe that the city staff. Needs us to continually tell them, hey, always think through a climate action lens. That, we're way better than that.
Yeah.
And I don't mean us either. I mean, our city staff is. They shouldn't.
Yeah, but.
Like, so us having a goal to say that, hey, make sure you guys think through a sustainability lens. It's not, it's, it's bureaucracy at a.
Okay, hold on. One conversation at a time, one conversation at a time.
Go ahead, I said.
But no, I mean, I agree with you that, but it's, you know, you say, oh, how about you have city people who don't believe in climate change?
They answered us.
No, the, there were, I give you one example. There were. During the pandemic, some medical professional who didn't believe in the vaccines. But people say you have to take the vaccine and they repeat it. And I'm not in any side. I am not. It's an example, but people are working for the city. We are the leaders of the city. We make the goals. And like Martha say, it's the fifty thousand feet and the runway. Our goals don't make sense if the staff are not working on them. And that we trust our staff that when we have goals, they will see, they can come and say, hey, your goal is too ambitious. We can't do this. And that's when you say, oh, yeah, that's true. Or. But we have to have it as a goal.
I disagree. Additional point.
Hold on, I don't interrupt each other, please. And I will also just tell you, I, I'm just absolutely shocked that we're high-centered on this one because there's one up here where I'm like, holy shit, we're going to high center.
I think you'd be lead lord.
Yeah, I would guess that, yes. So how about, I think that what you guys are talking about. Is, is where Counselor Wenland started, which is this is too vague. So how about if I give you a proposal as part of the work plan? I mean, if you pick this. To give you something more specific, because I do think having the council adopt a facilities and fleet. Policy by the end of the year would be awesome. I think having, giving us direction to figure out how to uh, how, because I don't think I have an answer. I don't think Erica has an answer. How do we integrate climate? Into our CIP selection process? I don't think we know yet. That would be great. So don't focus on those first words.
Yeah.
Focus on the CIP and fleet and facilities.
Right.
And if we do that, do we get past this?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Fine. Yeah, we hear. I mean, we should listen to the city manager tell us. We, 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 we want, we want to continue the way we've, we've been doing things. We want. These options presented to us. We want everything viewed through a climate lens and we need to adopt this to do that. So let's not be full hearted.
And it's not because of bad things. It's not because of ill intent on anybody's part. It's just that there are so many competing priorities. That, remember what I told you this whole session is about. What are your priorities?
Okay, but there will always be competing priorities. And I have to say that as long as I've been part on, of city council, I think the staff has done an outstanding job of. Of proposing and bringing up options and having this as part of the conversation.
And apparently because we have it as a goal.
It is. It is because you have it as a goal. I will tell you, I will tell you a short story. I won't tell you where, I won't tell you who. But let me just say, we're in the process of designing a new facility and we're going to build it with no EV charging spot. And it's like. Good news, I had this and could go talk to that department and said, where's your EV charging? And they were able to understand that that was a council priority. If you don't have it, it's not that we are bad people. It's just not top of mind. Okay. The next one around educating residents, I hear Counselor Wenland say, we shouldn't have to have that as a council goal. Council shouldn't spend its time on that. Anybody have a reaction? That's what you said, right? In a nutshell.
Yeah, I mean. But I felt like you had some other actions underneath.
There's a bunch of, there's a bunch of.
What's the council work on this?
Uh, you're going to have the council, the community green tariff conversation that you're going to have to have about PGE's programs to essentially opt people into a community.
I'm sorry, we have a, uh, we have staff that are dedicated towards this now.
It, yes.
But that's what they should be doing. So why is it a goal? I, that's.
We have to do the, the work on it though.
I just want, I want to echo what John, where John's going with this and. Because we have so, we're such a high-functioning city council. We have so many things that, we all have our pet projects. We all, we, as a group, we have pet projects, individuals we do. When we have goals that aren't specific, imagine the goals that we can put in their place and do, and to do, right? So. That's, I think, goes to your point. We could do if uh. With those goals that aren't specific and that we have are kind of like I keep saying nebulous. We can substitute for other things that we're not able to get to because we're filled with nebulous goals. So let's make sure that whatever we do is specific and we can target it and get it done. Or else put something in its place.
Yeah, I mean, you have to make choices. So that's absolutely correct. So I, I, I think it's fair to say this wouldn't be my choice, right? That's what you're here to do.
Yeah.
Which is what I hear you saying is that we have staff to do this. It doesn't require council time.
I would, I would assume because we have staff that are signed up for this, that are specifically dealing with the subject matters, that they would be doing this. And if they're not, again, that's on the management level of saying, why aren't they doing it?
It's really a question of do you want to spend council time on this topic? But we are going to spend staff time on this.
Yeah, I don't know what we would do as a council. I mean, I'm not going to create the educational strategies to tell people how to do things. I mean, I, I guess for informing people and engaging, I, I mean.
But the green, the, the green energy.
Tariff, that's essentially.
Has to be council action.
Yeah, you'll, it, it'll have to be for a lot of reasons. Remember, that's going to, if we go down that pathway, it's, it's essentially a mandatory opt-in. People have to, it's an affirmative opt-out. So. If you decide to pursue the community green tariff, you're essentially going to be raising everybody's electric bills to buy green power. So, I mean, people can opt out. People have the choice of. So, I mean, people can opt out, people have the choice to opt out, but as we all know, a negative check off is more challenging. Uh, than an opt in.
But that's something that we have to do anyway.
Absolutely, you're going to spend time on it.
Right.
Are you going to spend a lot of your time talking about it in public so that when it comes forward and people understand? It's really, yes, you're going to absolutely work on it, I'm not telling you to pick it, I'm just telling you what it is.
Well, no, for instance, we we could not pick that and we could spend all year talking about lawn equipment. I mean, this is, we have to, to me, this number two is kind of the the climate change aspect of these goals. When I look at, we have the integration into city decisions, that's kind of critical. Um, and then the the rest of these urban forest community plan is more community resiliency. You know, lawn equipment is mostly a livability issue, there's some climate thing to it, but it's not as impactful. As our work on the number two, so this is, I see this, and correct me if I'm wrong, is kind of the climate impact.
It's a big one.
I hundred percent agree that number two is.
Big one.
It's a big one, the question I have for you, mayor. From a workload, our workload, city council, are we going to engage and educate residents? That's going to be, to me, that seems like something the staff is going to do, are we personally going to create the strategies? I feel like that's going to be something staff does. But I mean, we're going to adopt them, right, but the work, like, are we going to do, that's not stuff that we're going to actually hands on.
We don't do anymore.
But we don't do anymore, like, that's the thing.
Alright, 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 alright.
I think, when I'm hearing councillor F, I think we need some more specificity on on what exactly is it.
With all of these, the next thing that happens after you adopt them is I come back to you with a work plan. And then you say, yeah, that's what we want to do or not, I, what I'm hearing this debate about is that you would rather, if you were going to take on clean energy use. You would rather focus on the strategy as opposed to the education piece, that's what I'm hearing.
Cause, yeah, I think.
Am I missing it?
That's accurate, but I guess it's.
You're going to have a range of choices, if you want to promote clean energy use by residents and businesses, you have a range of choices. From everything about, just like we were talking about with home based businesses, from how do you just make it easy to get a permit to put a solar panel in? Like, how do you facilitate it, all the way to, do you want to make an investment? Do you want to create a grant or a loan? You have a, if you were going to pursue that, there is a wide range of policy choices. The question is, do you want to work on that or not? And I I I'm agnostic on that, but if you do want to work on it, what I hear you saying is, what you're more interested in is working on. Is us, the strategic choices, again, if you want to promote solar in the community. There is a body of work to be done there that we are not currently positioned to do. I I don't, whether you want to take that up or not, I don't know. And I think you remember when we had the clean energy goal a couple of years ago, we quickly came to the conclusion that solar is the most viable. Clean energy strategy if we're really going to do it locally, but all the other ones were.
Yeah, we're putting up a whole bunch of windmills, I thought we had the contract signed.
Yeah, it's true, and they're all going to be on the top of.
Yeah, in middle of the lake.
I wasn't, that was bad, sorry. Okay, does everybody clear, if we were to, I I'm not telling you how to vote, we're going to vote on it in a second. But if you were to take up number two, you'd really be focused on developing and adopting a strategy to increase clean energy. That's more what your role is, that's what I hear the conversation being about, okay, let's keep going, I'm just trying to watch the clock. Uh, the next one is the next steps, the urban and community forestry plan. Uh, and then the non regulatory elements, I'm assuming that those two sentences are fine. I I think you ought to have a little conversation about the tree code. I mean, you're going to have a lot of, but, okay, alright, so I don't have to tell you what it is now, okay. Um, the next one around gas powered lawn equipment, who wants to talk about why they think this is the year? No, no, councillor Rapp.
Why is it the year?
Wait, 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 councillor Rapp, let me let someone who's in favor of this particular initiative open this. I always like to let the the um.
I was going to use nebulous.
The affirmative, I don't, I wrote this one nebulous on purpose, because several of you wrote what the end result will be. And I will say, until you go through the process, you don't know what the end result will be, councillor.
That's what I want to begin the process, to figure out what the end result for what we think it needs to look like for Lake Oswego. Because what Portland does might not fit what is right for Lake Oswego. So I would like to begin the process of saying, what should this look like in LO?
This will be pickleball like in its dimensions in terms of the amount of public time it takes, okay. Who wants to speak after councillor Verdick? I'll come to you, don't worry. Councillor Corrigan?
Yeah, I agree, I agree with councillor Verdick. I think it's just an issue across a lot of communities. And I think we've been, we've received so many requests on this over the years, I think we need to, I I really do think we need to take a look at it. And see in what way we could possibly make progress on it. It's quality of life issue, it is, and it is a, it is a health issue for all the people who operate the big gas. The big gas blowers, and I I don't think we should have a deaf ear on this, I really think we should take some time and we should study.
I think that's, I think that's a dollar for Carrie. Yeah, okay, thank you, alright, councillor Mavu.
No, yeah, I I mean, we, the letter, there's, there's one of the community member who wrote. A letter is documentation, a study Portland State did and studies that were done in Washington DC. I think we need to move and just say, there is no more gas blower, that's our, like. Our, when we, the problem I have when we say that, oh, how about the underdeveloped people who are working here? They don't have money to purchase the equipment, but we should protect them if we care about them. The gas blower is deafening, it's not a good thing. And also to breathe that air to being close and doing that is lethal to them. So why not?
Why don't they change it right now? Why don't they already do it then?
Why aren't they what?
Why don't they already do?
No, that's why I say we have to do it.
But why wouldn't they if it's so easy and it's bad?
No, I'm not saying, it's not, no, no, I'm not, no, because it's it's cheaper, no, because it's cheaper for them to do it. It, no, yeah, no.
So again, I didn't want to, I didn't want to get into that.
I just want, my position is we have to implement this thing, that's it.
And just poking it.
Yeah, that, yeah, no, I know.
Let me go to the mayor and then councillor Rapp.
We have been working on this, right, we've been, we've got councillor Wenland and I heard a great presentation from director Anna Holman Parks, all of the equipment, they, I mean, from the truck. All the way down to the blower, you know, and then everything in between, the lawnmowers, everything, the parks department's electrified, we got the contracts. So we've been leading by example, but we hear the community saying, we want it to go further, now we have the biggest city in the region taking action on this front. And I think why councillor um Verdick says, let's, let's be, and I agree with it, let's, let's be ready. You know, it's coming, it it's coming, we've seen other cities that have good policies where they've crafted even some. Not the cities in Southern California that do not share our same climate, communities like Lake Oswego have our same climate. Craft policies with seasonal banning, there's just lots of options out there, you know, that 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 we could look at. Not saying this should be the top thing that we do, but it should be something that we are focusing on, especially going into this year. With Portland on the verge of adopting something, but we would have to look at what's right for our community.
Alright, councillor Rapp.
Good points, Mr. Good points, um, I think if we. As a city, we should only focus on our own house, which means do ever, if we want to do this in the city and electrify all our equipment. By all means, we should do it, we should not be going out and telling business owners, private business owners, people who who own homes to, what to do. On their property or with their property, um, frankly, in in all seriousness, you're going to laugh at me. You're already laughing at this, um, if we outlaw gas powered lawn equipment for um. For, I mean, homes and businesses, you might as well just throw out our diversity equity inclusion goals. It's completely racist in my opinion.
I think you should remove that because.
No, I disagree, because if we limit people, businesses from using certain equipment. Certain businesses don't have the money or the wherewithal to purchase electric equipment. And but there is, the people that do our lawn and landscaping equipment may not have the ability or the finances to make that change. And we should not be telling people how to survive and you're going to seriously impact um people, people's livability. By outlawing this equipment, I don't, I think it's, I think it's, has racist implications and it severely impacts our diversity equity inclusion.
I think what you say is very like troubling, because in in your way, the people who are doing these jobs. They are the people that are underrepresented communities, so if we remove that, it's racist. Because it's racist when generally they are people of colors. And so in our mind as Lake Oswiguan, the people who own those business had them Mexicans. The people from northeast Portland, or no, most of these business are operated by white folks. That their business now, it's like to respond to racism, that's not racism. The, we are talking about, it's like, and what you say.
You're impacting a race, a race, certain races of people and you're impacting socio socioeconomic.
No, I want to tell you that, sir, the, yeah, the people who are operating this thing. We want good neighborhood, we don't want our neighbors to be poisoned by this ga- gas. That's all we are defending, you, people talk about the blue zone, my, and that's what I love the most. About what John brought in here, the blue zone, if you want our people to live long, we have to develop it. Not everything, you have your home, you're burning, what is it called, that drug that you cook? Uh, meth, you're burning meth in your house, you don't have the right to burn meth in your house. Yeah, but it's the same, like that, burning meth or burning the gas, that's the same, metha- uh, I don't know.
Okay, so I think y'all know where you're sitting on this, you haven't had anything to say, John, do you care about weighing in on this?
I think it's an interesting discussion, I I will say that there are economic implications to this. And I do think that there's, there's a lot of people in Lake Oswego that are going to say, that's a pretty far reach to be telling me how I do my yard. Um, and uh, and if you want to know, look at the statistics where it showed. Um, we'll get some slides in here to show really what's fact and what's myth. And one of the myths is, is that the decimal rating, which is, I think primarily the biggest concern that people have with blowers. Um, the decimal rating is pretty close to the same, whether it's electric or gas. So, um, you know, there's a lot of the things that are, um, I think mis- uh, misstated. And it's emotional and and so on, and and just like the pickleball um conundrum we were in. There was very few people that were truly affected by the noise, but most people didn't like it because they didn't want neighbors parking their neighborhood. Which is a completely different um subject matter than what the noise was. It's a complex issue, folks, uh, if we want to get into this, it's going to be ten times worse than pickleball. Because I've already had a number of people telling me, you, you're telling me that the city's going to tell me how I take care of my street and my yard. I would say if we want to do the blue zone, is that actually more people in Lake Oswego should do their own yards for exercises than hiring them. But that's a whole nother issue.
I'm out there often by myself, actually I have a couple of neighbors who also garden.
So if you want to get in the blue zone discussion, so.
So I guess the main thing about this is I would propose to you, and you guys can vote how you want to do it, that that we not take this work up until after. We know what's happened and played out in Portland, I, I, their market share, like, leaving aside everything else, and I understand the desire. Their market share in this industry is a lot bigger than ours. Um, the second thing I will say is that if you take this one up, I'm going to really be hard line on you guys about nineteen or twenty. Because I do believe this will take a lot of your time. But I think that there are a lot of folks who feel very passionately about this and you're going to have to carve out the time to hear from them.
Right, no, we have to.
Who, SAB will deal with it.
No, I.
No, I don't, I don't think so. I, and I'll tell you, I think SAB's been trying to deal with this for quite a long time.
They have a good approach, they have a good approach. I know that, I I I, not to speak for that board, but they had a conversation, but I think they feel the same way, not, not the top priority. But it's something that's, they haven't kicked off the list, you know.
Well, maybe let the fifty plus advisory board do it.
That's funny, alright, so uh, let's go to the next one, EV charging strategy, I think that's coming, isn't it coming? Does the council need to pick that as a goal? Right, I mean, I don't know that that you guys are going to need, I think the hardest part on the EV strategy, charging strategy is that. Um, the, what's the, the role of the public sector versus the private sector? I think, as you know, as we, as we go from one type of technology to another, often the public sector has to get involved to sort of accelerate the private sector's investment. And so I, I do think that's probably the most complicated issue, but I don't think you're going to find it to be particularly controversial. Um, and then. I, no, you're going to vote on it, I'm just telling you, if I were choosing, um, if I had thirty two that I had to get to twenty, it wouldn't be when I would pick. Um, uh, that's all I'm saying, um, you could pick it if you want.
Me anyways.
You can pick it if you want, uh, and then the last one is just whether you want to go the extra um. Extra process to go from what CPEC already requires, which is EV or EV ready versus chargers actually installed. In your code, in other words, are you going to regulate this? Okay, are you ready to vote?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So is six not part of five?
No, six is very specific about actually requiring multi family.
I get that, but I didn't know if it might be.
I don't think the EV charging strategy is going to contemplate anything more for multi family than CPEC already contemplates.
It's kind of like parking places, let the market decide on, I I don't think there's going to be any new multi family. Construction that's not going to have an EV station or any new house that's going to be built without an EV charger in the, in the garage.
And I'll say, I also think that the limitation on EV charging in terms of what's available is really going to be more tied to what's available in the grid. Actually, I think the constraint you're going to find is actually how much electricity is available. Alright, are you ready to vote? Okay.
It's not a bad thing.
Alright, here's the first one, this first one is remembering that we're going to change this to adopting policies. We will modify this one, even though it hasn't been modified in years, we'll do it again. Alright, next one. Uh, this is the, and again, we'll modify this one to be adopt a strategy to increase clean energy use. Oh, okay. Wow, okay, next one, urban trees.
As much as I don't want to talk about tree code, we're going to.
Well, I guess I do have a concern about trees and gas powered lawn equipment in the same year, but that's, we'll just, we'll just.
Shoot the air.
Yeah. Gas powered lawn equipment. One more vote.
Oh, interesting.
Okay. Alright, next one. I already told you how to vote on this one. Thank you. Okay. Next one, development code. Okay. Love it, keep going, alright, alright, you made it through climate, it was the one I thought would be the hardest, this one's also hard.
Can I have a vote for somebody off the island? How do you know I've, when I was young?
We know, we know. Alright, this is the one about city operations, you guys made a change to this last year to focus it on public trust, I thought was a lovely change. Nobody made any suggestions about the strategical, there's a lot of initiatives proposed, so let's go through them.
It's only two thirty two, we're getting.
You guys are getting punchy at only two thirty, and you can't have another break for, at least till we get through this. Maybe a little longer, we'll see how it goes. Um, the, I'm just going to run through the initiatives, I'll come back and talk about them, the first one is the wastewater plant. The second one is the library and you'll see, I guess I'm going to need you guys to talk about. Number two and number three and how do they work together, um, the one is, the second one is about the library strategic plan. Uh, but it does have that second part in it, evaluate opportunities to improve access, which I think might overlap a little bit with number three. So when we come back, we'll talk about it, the third one is to develop the strategies for um, a community center on the west side of town. And you'll see a lot of the other elements, several of you had this. And so if if your exact thought isn't captured here, it's because I mushed it together, because I tried to just give you one. And then just um, whether or not there's an opportunity for collaboration with a district, may or may not be real, but there it is. The next one is the goal you had on this year, which I ask you to postpone um, to do it of the off cycle, number four. Number four, I remember I asked you to postpone it to do in the off cycle as opposed to doing it in a budget year. So we would do it this year because I actually think it's more useful to y'all to do it in the off cycle than to do it in the middle of the budget process. The fifth one, um, and this comes a little bit out of the community survey, which is figuring out how to address South Shore Fire Station, which I think you all know, um, the equipment bays are earthquake resilient, but the living quarters are not. Um, and then the sixth one is, it's, again, I may not have captured this perfectly, so please accept my apology. A couple of you had, um, uh, initiative proposals around a sort of cities, brands and, uh, and image. Uh, I think a couple of you caught, uh, catch them in the negative and I, I don't think you ever talked about branding in the negative. So really to strengthen our, our brand. Okay, so can I just walk through them? Anybody have anything about the wastewater plant? Okay, the second one around the library. How about the second and third one? Could somebody talk?
Well, I'll start on this one. I mean, I, I think we need the overall strategy and I think they somewhat go together. I mean, tactically, I think number two, um, the library group is already working on ways to access because we have a, a very high level, uh, library group that, um, knows how to get things done. And they're, they're getting things done with the resources they have. I would say that the council is not necessarily big on investing a huge amount of money in, um, library services until we have kind of the whole strategic, strategic plan put together. But I do think that some of the, um, uh, opportunities that they've, um, taken and developed on their own. Um, Melissa's been doing a fabulous job with, um, the whole library to get new ways of experiencing the library. And I mean, look at the ingenuity that they had during COVID. I mean, that, that's just the type of DNA that's there. I do think though that it's a larger, um, discussion. Um, and that's why I think three kind of is really the strategic one that we need to work on for initiative. Um, and, and two is it's an ongoing improvement that they're doing. And if she needs a little bit of money or something to do something, I'm sure we can find it, but that's kind of my feeling.
Okay, Councilor Rapp, I'm seeing Councilor Verdick give me the thought bubble.
You guys know how I feel about the library. Um, but I, while I don't think that it's something that we can probably afford in the near future, I do think that it seems something that we need to actually have a long-term plan for how we get after it. Um, I doubt whether or not it's gonna be something in the next couple of years, but agree. And this is more of a question regarding it, community center, or we've talked about a secondary library on the west side. Kira in the back room, we were in lunch, said something that struck me as interesting. She said in college, they had a shuttle system that students would run for students that were drinking off campus.
Yeah, she went to U of O.
U of O. Well, no, but hold on, this is actually.
She was just an observer.
As we were, so as we. Remind me, when we were thinking about how do we get, uh, how do we allow citizens on the west side to access lib- library here or a community center? Did we ever think about an idea of like funding a, some sort of community shuttle system that would just, instead of building something over there, we operate a way to just, you call it like in Sun River, they have the lodge show, just some sort of shuttle system to bring people over here. So you don't have to build two or, did we ever think about anything like that?
Yeah, so let me answer that question. It's sort of, it'll sort of feel like not an answer. Certainly, we can't do door-to-door to the library. We can't afford door-to-door service to the library whenever you feel like it. The ACC does run their van system and does often, uh, and actually, I think one of the days, they do make sure that not only can you go to the ACC or the grocery store, but you can also go to the library. So the ACC is doing some of that.
Is that available to students or younger people?
So we're also having some very, very early conversations cuz it's been a Chamber of Commerce goal to look at a community circulator service. It's also been part of our advocacy with Trima as we, as they've done their service enhancement plans. So I, in terms of a door-to-door, the other thing the library's done, which I'm sure you all recall, uh, cuz you were all paying attention every time Melissa talked, is they've greatly expanded the rover system and they're also looking at, um, a bookmobile so that they can do, uh, service delivery all over town, not just, you know, not.
I was, I think the, the first half of that was more where my mind was going is how do you get a community center slash library that we don't have to build two of them, that you can keep it here, but find a way to get all people of all ages to it. Those who can't drive, those who can. And I think you, the things you mentioned, like partnerships with Trima, the Chamber of Commerce, I think.
Yeah, but it's very, very preliminary discussions we're having about a community.
But it should be something we, we think through as we talk about.
It's not just the library, it's also the fact that the Lorac is on the edge of town.
Yeah, so all good things, okay.
Yeah, okay. Uh, other things about number two or number three. I don't wanna get too far off into the community circulator service, uh, conversation cuz
Yeah.
I, I don't know whether we can afford it yet, so, yeah.
Good idea.
Yeah, go ahead. And you do have a mobility goal coming up. You also have a mobility goal coming.
No, yeah, I just, I was the liaison to the library and I followed what they were doing. I support that, you know, and we all know also how this library is structurally and all the things. So for me, it's a goal we should maintain and work hard to find a library that suits Lake Oswego. So for me, it's.
So, but that would be more of a number three for you rather than number two.
That's.
Okay, other thoughts? Go ahead, Councilor Verdick. I know.
I just, I concur really with what Councilor Wenland said. Um, I think the library's doing a fantastic job of what they have. And so really kudos to that entire team, um, for doing that. But I think long-term, I would love to see something around number three. Um, I think there's a lot of ideas in there and they'll have to be flushed out. But I think something, you know, a community center that'd be inclusive, inclusive of a lot of public services of the li- a new library. Um, you know, again, I think realistically, we're a one library city. Um, you know, if we continue some of the other features that we have, that would be fantastic. Um, so again, I think we have short-term, let's, you know, if there are some immediate needs to support the library as it is and to kind of get some of those other services. I love it, but I think we need to be focusing on three really as more of a, a broader, long-term strategy. And to Aaron's point, that's not necessarily in the next three years or anything, but I think we need to be looking and really being creative cuz these are opportunities and are gonna take partnerships that will take time. Um, we're gonna have to be creative and we're gonna have to look at that, but I think we should, you know, let's look, let's aim high and look big.
Okay, Councilor Corrigan, I also saw a thought bubble over your head.
Created the 50,000th level. This is a long-term project and I suppose we ought to.
Okay, Your Honor.
Yes, well, and our options are, you know, not, um, not many. You know, we're looking at something centrally located. And because of the funding aspect, ideally something where we can leverage a partnership, use an urban, uh, um, the urban renewal tool and something like Councilman is a comprehensive, you know, community facility. But we should be explicit, you know, that our, our, our vision is not to create two libraries, three libraries, a satellite system, a new library. We know the current location is not ideal. That's, we got that from, from, from the feedback. So a, a, a new center that's responsive to the engagement work that, that we did, um, and, um, is in a, a more accessible, uh, location.
Okay, all right, I think that you guys have talked that one out. Anybody questions about number four? Number five? Number six, anybody have anything to say about number six?
Think I'll, but number five, it means be a kind of.
Doing that every day.
You know, again, I, it's just a question of whether it's a priority for the council. I think we did heard during the community survey that there's public support and interest in making sure that that fire station's resilient.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can I just speak? I actually went and had a tour of it yesterday.
Yeah, if you haven't been in the restroom in that building.
I have to say, I was appalled. So I, I do actually like the fact that we have this. I think we need, again, this is gonna be one of those big projects. It's gonna be a big investment, but based on the community survey is concerned about the station, if you look at it, wow.
Yeah.
Um, and I have to say that, the, the members who were staying there, at least during this shift, they were all, you know, like we're making the best of it. They were not complaining, so kudos for, you know, your staff chief. You know, they have great attitudes, but I think also if we're looking at, you know, equity, this bathroom is almost not even good for one gender, let alone more than one gender. I mean, it's,
Yeah.
A- a- and, and safety, there's egress issues. The, the issues are so much more than just, is it seismic, seismicly sound? So I do think this is something that we need to, I don't know that we can keep kind of putting it aside much longer. I think we need to start strategizing and thinking about it seriously.
Sure.
If there's a way to tie into that transport into that conversation, I think that would be good use of our time.
Yeah, but.
I, I hear what you're saying. I do think if you think that South Shore statement's gonna stay there, though sooner or later you have to have a conversation about the building regardless of what you operate out of it.
Yep, and I see tomorrow that it has. Stay there. You know, one of the threat to Lake Oswego is fire. In, in.
Yeah, wildfire.
Yeah, wildfire. What we had in the last week, if we had it on fire, will disappear. So we need that station over there in case of that, so that we have all the city with people who know.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, no, the stations are kind of well-located for the geography of the community. Okay. Anything anybody wants to say about number six? I will also say you guys are not doing that great of a job of choosing yet. And so I'm a little concerned about how many we're gonna get at the end. No, I'm gonna make work them again. I gotta tell you that I'm not joking when I say.
Knock some off.
You've knocked some off, but you added one that I know is gonna take a lot of time.
But this one, this one can we hire the chamber to do?
There's a long, yeah, hire the chamber to do it. Number five, you mean, or number six? No, I think this is about the city's organizational brand. It's whether or not you wanna spend council time on that and then in the next year or not. This for me is a classic of we could do this work anytime. The question is, is it really ripe right now?
I don't think that takes a lot of time from city council. I think it's something to be saying we're gonna do and the staff takes, it takes.
But with our goals, we're saying where do we wanna put staff's time? So we can't just keep saying, well, staff is gonna do it, doesn't affect us. Everything we do here, we're, it's, it, staff only has so much bandwidth and I know.
Commission Summit, this is one of the big ones that came out of that.
I, I'm not talking about this one specifically. I'm just saying in general, you're kind of, I keep hearing, well, staff is gonna do it, staff. Well, staff can only do so much, so when we do this priority, it might not take this group much time, but that doesn't mean.
Uh, there's one other thing I'd like to say about this one cuz I think about this one a lot. Um, I think that there are some folks who somehow think that the story about Lake Oswego is negative. And I would just challenge your thinking around that. I think the story about LO is, what I'm saying is I think this comes from a place where people don't like, they think people are telling a horrible story about the community. And I just don't know that that's true.
No, I'd have to say that, um, companies look very deeply into community culture and so on. And we had two, as I said earlier, two large companies that, um, decided to move here because of our reputation. Um, I think we do have a good perception. Um, part of it is, is, uh, I, I think we're doing things right and I think there's other places that are not doing things right. And so, um, we're a good, good option. On six though, um, and I talked to City Manager Bennett about this. The, um, Parks and Rec group is working on a branding exercise. Um, and they're doing a fabulous job and it, and it's, it's, uh, it does take some, some time. But what I'm worried about is that we're having a, a department dealing with this and we don't have an overall corporate, um, uh, branding sort of guideline. And so if each of our departments re- rebrands themselves, um, with different logos and colors and everything else, it, in my work in corporate America, we would always start at the top and then find out what somewhat similarly your mission and, and what you're trying to, to do. And then each division would have their own separate branding, but it was always within the context of, um, sort of the mothership, whatever that is. Um, and so, um, while I think the Parks and Rec should continue to do exactly what they're doing, um, I think there's a huge opportunity. They're doing it, um, for several reasons. Um, they've done this before, but one of the big things is that with Lorac opening up and the golf course and, and receipt, um, uh, and they're spot on, on, on the work that they're doing. Um, I just, uh, with number six, it's kind of like, um, I just.
You're making the argument that now is the time that this, there's an opportunity.
Probably, and it's, it's not a huge amount of work from the standpoint. I mean, if you have a consultant like, like they've had come in, you participate and they, they pull things together and they can help guide the city on, on, um, on things. So it's just a thought, um, and it's not a, it's, I don't think there would be a whole lot of council time per se. It would be more of a, um, branding type.
Right.
And so anyway, um.
Oh, okay. Anything else on that? Cuz I would make you vote.
One last thing.
Yeah.
So on the last point, I agree that for the most part, everything is very positive about Lake Oswego. But the feeling that I got from the Boards of Commission Summit about specifically this was over and above, everybody's super proud to be Lake Oswigans. Right? We can all agree with that.
Yeah.
I think where this comes from was the few but loud individuals, organizations inside and outside Lake Oswego that it's, it's really easy to take potshots at Lake Oswego, right? And I think these people who live in Lake Oswego and the Boards of Commission Summit, they're so proud of where they live and who they are that it hurts their feelings to hear these negative people say negative things that most likely aren't true. And I think that's what, this is, to me, that's what I heard. And so to, what I think this is more about is diving into that. What is it that can't, that is happening, you know, cuz this is part of livability in Lake Oswego. If people are proud, but, you know, are.
But when they're on an airplane, they say they're.
Yeah, no, you live in a racist Lake Oswiguan or you're all rich people, like it hurts your feelings. So is there work that we can do to find out the root of all this and see what we can do about it? Maybe there's nothing. Maybe it's just sitting and just like take it. I don't know, but it seemed a, 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 there's a volume of.
I, I wouldn't wanna underestimate, if we're gonna go that route and really do some research, I really wouldn't wanna underestimate the, the financial and staff resources. Probably actually council resources required to do some of that unpacking. I know that we, we've done it in the past, you've been concerned about some of the things we have found. So I think, I, I hear you. All right, are you guys ready to vote?
Yep.
I'm trying to watch the clock.
Yes.
All right, the first one is the wastewater plant.
Oh, I don't, do we support this, guys? I don't know.
In for a penny, in for a pound.
In for a penny, in for $600 million. All right, keep going. Uh, the, okay, remember, I'm kind of asking you to have some nuance between number two and number three. Doesn't have to be perfect, just which, where is the emphasis? Okay, that's six. All right, this is the all-ages community center. Okay.
Somebody didn't vote right.
Yeah. It's okay, you're not, there's, there's more than one of you for a reason. The next one is the financial review. Remember, I told you this is where we'll do TLT. Okay.
So for those that are low in support to this, we have no idea how much money really we have to spend. So if you don't really support this, you may be spending money you don't have. I'm just telling you that. I think you need to have, I didn't really speak to this.
I'm happy to tell you anytime.
All I'm saying is that this is just really a review, which we talked about last year to, and encourage us to know what the financial picture is going towards the future. So we know what resources are available to make good decisions.
Could this be a budget committee interim thing?
Yeah, I think that's what we're gonna do is remember the commitment I made to the budget committees. We'd use them in the off year to do this. And this is really about looking at long-term revenue and expenditure side and sort of see what are the trends and where are our vulnerabilities. I, I, I think.
Well, more basically than that, I think we are, we run the city. We are administrators of the Lake, of city of Lake Oswego. We should have a, we don't have to have any expert knowledge of the finances, but we should have a pretty good idea. I mean, any CEO would, is gonna understand the finance. We should know that, so it's really important.
Pick this goal for you. I mean, I mean, I think it's a great thing for you to do.
If anything, it's good learning.
He's rolling his eyes behind me, but, um, I do think that things like understanding long-term trends that impact both the revenue side and the expenditure side is a good idea.
Yes.
I mean, and I frequently stand in front of you and say, well, you can't, you have to choose. You can't afford to do both and I want you to believe me.
No, right. I would be fine to take this off as a goal if you think it's automatically going to happen.
I don't think it is automatically gonna happen without you and I think there may be follow-on action that the council has to take as a result of this. I mean, things like what are you gonna do about stormwater financing? What are you gonna do about street financing? Is I think something that will follow from this, so I would leave it there if I were you. And I know there's also a lot of statements that are made about things like PERS and I want you to really understand that. And if there is direction that comes from your deep understanding of that, then I wanna make sure that we've allocated enough council time to deal with it. Okay, cuz there'll be a follow-on.
Yeah.
There'll be something that follows this. All right, the next one. South Shore. This one's hard. Okay, that's six. And then the brand conversation, the Brandon story. One more about. Still waiting on one person. Somebody, do I need to call him out? Is it a sin? You haven't voted on this one.
Which one I own it?
The last one. Okay, we got you. All right. You guys doing okay?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, because I think we're gonna have to have some time at the end for choices. I think we're.
Is this the last?
Oh, no. We have two more after. This, we have this one and two more after this to go. This one should be relatively easy.
City manager, can I just interrupt just for a minute? I just want to remind everybody, if you can turn on your microphones, I know they're a little bit fiddly, but and speak into them. We're having a little bit of trouble with the record, so I just wanted to remind everybody to do that. Thanks.
Remember, Carrie needs you on the microphones that uh, first people who are watching can hear you, but second of all. When she needs to go back and write the minutes, you can hear you. Okay. Nobody proposed any changes to this one, so it goes as presented. The next is the initiatives. Okay, there were. Four proposed. And you'll see three of the four are essentially the next phase. And and candidly, and I know my friends of Lusher in the room, um, I think we do need some conversation among all of you. About how you would balance receipt investments. Versus Lusher investments. And I'm not telling you, you have to choose today because we will fund them all eventually. It's a question of what goes first. Um, okay, the first one is the Lorac and Golf Course, and the only modification made here is that you will be overseeing the launch. Right, which is awesome. Uh, the next one is funding strategy for receipt park phases two and three. You'll see I listed them as two and three, not just two. Um, and then the next one is to finish the work that uh, you've been overseeing on the parts plan. And then last but not least. Is sort of figuring out what's going on at Lusher. Here is here. It would be useful, I think, for the council to hear a quick summary, both of what's happening at Clackamas County relative to Lusher. And also what's going on with local share. Could you do a quick overview of that? Really quick, Kira. Would that be useful to you? I think you might. It might help.
Yes.
Thank you, Kira Haggart with Parks and Recreation. Uh, I'll start with Lusher.
Yeah.
Um, Clackamas County, we've been working with Clackamas County over the last year. They have adopted some amendments to their development code. That have created a way for us to submit a land use application, um, which would amend their comprehensive plan so that they would be adopting. The Lusher Area Master Plan as a county park master plan document. Um, that would then create a way for us to apply to implement the, the uses that are in that master plan.
So how long will it take the county to adopt?
The county has adopted their amendments, so the next step in the process is for us to prepare an application and submit it to the county.
Do we have a time estimate on that?
It's about a year's work of worth. It's gonna be a major application.
Okay, next question. Well, why don't you just give them a quick overview of the metro local share dollars? And then what I want to know is, is the project at Lusher. That's contemplated for those local share dollars permissible under the current regs?
Yeah. Um, so we've been doing community engagement for about a year as part of the Metro Local Share Program. We have about two million dollars in funding for capital investments. Um, or design for, for trail projects as part of that program. Think of it kind of like a grant. Um, Lusher, the Lusher Access and Parking is a project that we included. For potential funding and it was ranked highly among the projects. We had about seven um, projects that were included as we asked the community to help us prioritize. Um, that project is permissible. However, we first have to go through the land use application process before we can spend the dollars on that capital investment.
So we'll have to get a permit from the county.
We'll have to get a, a comprehensive plan amendment, a historical overlay modification, development permit.
So if you were making, and Kara, I'm just gonna put you on the spot, and I apologize, if you were sort of uh, recommend, making a recommendation to the council about what do you, what did they need to give? Sort of political or public support for to advance Lusher, what is it that they, that is the best role for the electeds?
We'll need.
As opposed to the staff.
We'll need support during the community engagement phase, because this is gonna be a community engagement. Process as part of the development application to make sure that not just our city residents, but also our neighbors in the Stafford Hamlet are comfortable with the work that's being done. So. Um, support for the process, especially once we move into hearings, but also during the community engagement is gonna be helpful for us.
All right, do you got, any of you have questions for Kara? Was, was this helpful or not helpful in terms of what you're gonna prioritize in?
Helpful. So does number four mean that we can't really do number four until they're done with this process?
Yeah, that's what I was asking her really is, what is it? What's your work in twenty twenty-four? And it sounds like your work is support the community engagement. Efforts for the county process. That would be like the next body of work. And so then now you have a decision to make about whether or not that's a council priority, right? Okay, we're gonna keep doing this work around Lusher because the reality is we've had a master plan for this. For the park for a really long time, and we can't advance it until after we clear this regulatory hurdle. So we're gonna do that. The question is just, do you, do you guys want to spend council time and energy? Okay, thank you. Any more questions for her before I let her go?
Well, well, the, the local share, there's uh, uh, have we prior, have we as a community decided on the project that we're going to submit? We have one project, right? We can submit.
No, you, you have two point two million dollars for metro and the local share. Um, it's, it's done on a reimbursement. The hardest part is metro local share dollars come to us as reimbursement, so we have to have cash to do the project. There are seven projects. Um, I would guess based on what I know that you're gonna be able to get. Parts of several of them done, or parts of several of them advanced. So I'll just, because there are restrictions in the metro bonds that apply. For example, the Willamette River Greenway project, there's a restriction in the metro bond that says we can't spend their dollars. On property we condemned. And you will recall that we had condemned the last two easements, so their funds will partially fund. That project if you all pick it. But the next steps on the local share is that these guys are gonna go to the parks board, and then they'll come to you. And you'll identify the projects. They've already been pre-approved by Metro, or at least parts of them. So.
But we need a funding strategy to complete.
To finish, yes. We're working, we're working on that right now.
Oh.
And I'll just add that some of those projects will also be included in our, our project list for Parks Plan twenty forty. And they're just projects that we know the community wants, so we put them forward for Metro Local Share Funding because they were eligible.
And receipt phases two and three are not eligible, correct?
Correct.
So that's why it's up here as a standalone council goal.
Plenty of other projects.
So like the boardwalk in West Willuga Park is another one. Um, you can rattle, Willamette River Greenway, parking at Lusher. West Willuga, I think those are the top three right now, right?
Community garden expansions at Lusher was another one that was on there. We had a property acquisition at Sunny Slope, although I believe that's no longer on the market. Um, and then uh, the pathways through Hall and Ann Woods on the Yates property.
Yeah, on the Yates property.
Hey, chief, your whole full fleet just left the office.
It's good to know that there's something interesting happening in Lake Oswego.
Always something.
Probably not good, actually. All right, thank you, Kara. All right. Okay, you guys ready to vote on these? Or do you want to talk about them? Do you want to talk about any of them? Sorry, actually.
So I mean, do we have to? I know there's community interest in completing receipt park, and there's community interest and, and.
I don't think there's a lack of community interest in anything done in any park in Lake Oswego.
No. So is there? It, it seems like we need more kind of a, I don't like pit these against each other, you know, we need kind of a comprehensive. You got this local share thing, which is gonna require funding strategy to complete the projects. One of them may be projects involved in land.
Yeah, you could generalize, develop a funding strategy for capital, for parks, capital projects. The, the problem is you've got millions of dollars, and so I need to know how big or small you want that to be. That's why. And these came in the way they came in. So you know, some of you put receipt on your list. Um, and so, um. But yes, of course, we have many other capital projects in parks that we currently don't have funding available to finish. So the question is, do you want this to be bigger? Or do you want it to be, I don't.
Well, it needs to be at least as big as receipt, and the projects we've identified as local, that the community has prioritized as local share eligible projects, needs to be at least as big as that. I would think.
We can do that. What do y'all think about that? Funding strategy for receipt plus all partially funded local share?
Yeah.
Not everything on your, not all of those seven projects on local share, you're gonna wanna pick. Again, you're gonna wanna pick. So you've got two point two millions.
I, but obviously I have bias, but I like keeping receipt on its own because it's unfinished. It's, if we start, it started. Yeah, but I mean, that's the exact same as the other options.
Every other project has, yeah. I mean, it's, the unfortunate thing is even Lusher Farm, they've had this list for twenty-five years and, and I would. I, I, I hate to make decisions myopically. I would love to see the list.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, let's, let's do that. Let me write that down, and what you'll be voting on then is. Um, prioritize. And develop a funding strategy, adopt. A funding strategy. For partially funded. This is what we're gonna be doing. It's, we're not gonna be trying to fund everything, partially funded.
Mm-hmm. Parks projects.
Right, so, and in preference, he's all right, E G, Willamette River Greenway, receipt. West Willuga Trail, right?
And maybe guiding the counties.
Do you want that? I would say that's a separate, um, I don't mean.
Yeah, not as part of that.
Yeah, go ahead. And if you want to vote on that, if you want that to be a council priority, then have number four. Again, I, I'm, I'm starting to feel like you guys have. Voted everything as a high priority, and so we're, we're well above twenty at this point.
I mean, the county process is underway.
I just, again, once again, it's about, do you want as a council to spend your time on that?
We don't have to do anything. That'd be great. Could that be, I mean, if it still goes forward and we have to do nothing, we would.
I hear you. I hear you. So vote, vote the way you want to vote on number four, okay?
Okay, so let's just pretend that we vote the Lorac and Golf Course, very low support. What?
Good point. Are we gonna stop building it?
My own strategies now.
That would be into any time, anybody.
Stop?
Anybody calls me.
Don't, I mean, that's a great point. Like, we're not gonna stop building.
You know, you guys, we have this discussion at this point of the retreat every year, where I said, go ahead and do that. But then when you call me and say, I'm not happy with the date you picked for opening the golf course, I'm gonna be like, I don't care.
But we don't want to have too many goals.
I get it.
I know.
I get it.
No, this one is.
Okay, no.
It's not really, Lorac is not really a goal, guys. It's not, it's not really a goal. We're gonna do it. It's not gonna take a lot.
That's what I want. Should we have Laura as a goal? It's a don't deal.
I'm sorry, I'm making my face. I realize I'm making my face. I don't know how you can have a forty million dollar facility.
Yeah.
That's gonna increase the, the, an operating department of the city by the volume it's gonna operate and not have it a council goal.
No.
Like.
She's right.
It makes no sense.
But it's not gonna, you can touch that.
That I say it's because Lorac is gonna be delivered.
Am I gonna tell you, let me say this in a different way. It shouldn't, it shouldn't.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Take a huge amount of your time.
Yeah.
However.
Yeah.
If something goes wrong there and you haven't identified it at the council polls, you guys are not gonna look good.
All right, move on.
Okay.
Drag that from the record. I don't know. We could get something else on the list. I have no recollection, Senator.
If you guys put too many things on the list, I'm gonna say this part. You need to let me say this part. If you put too many things on the list. I get to pick what you work on.
Okay.
But I, I.
Come on, three of you.
I mean, there are some softballs here.
Absolutely. That's how I can get you to twenty. If you didn't have that, I could, I'd have to make you pick ten. All right, keep going. It's all right. You're just getting punchy. All right, remember, this is now morphed into something like this, prioritize and adopt a funding strategy for partially adopting.
Hmm.
Uh, it's all right. All right, five. All right, keep going.
Again, we don't have a choice on this because it's underway.
Correct.
Yeah.
And there will be choices for the council in this plan.
Important plan.
This is important stuff. This is fifty thousand square foot, or fifty thousand foot stuff. Okay, all right. Good job. All right, transportation.
And. We can skip this one. We have no money.
Actually, in this particular case.
Honestly, City of Portland doesn't have this much.
It's true. I don't know if they do goal setting. They will probably.
They don't accomplish any.
They, they, they will do goal setting in there when they have a city administrator. They'll make them. All right, so nobody proposed any changes to strategic goal here. Um, there were five initiatives proposed. Uh, the first one uh, is really continuation, although there was a, quite a lot of you suggested that it wasn't just about um, safe routes to schools. It was also about connecting. Uh, other places. If this is the way you want to go, I'm not positive. There's a huge amount of work for you guys to do there. There's a lot of work for TAB to do, because in the past. The council's been very clear, this is about connecting to schools. And that's been their, remember, we can do four to five projects a year. And this will change it. Go ahead.
As a representative with small children, I think we don't have a lot of goals that are targeted towards our younger community. And I think we should, this has always been a goal, safety to schools. It's an evergreen.
We're not, we're a long way away, a hundred years away from having a, a complete pedestrian network. At, at our current spend. So this really is a place where you gotta give us your policy direction around focus. So if you want to shift the focus to. Connecting neighborhoods to parks or neighborhoods to commercial districts, we can do that, but it will change.
Safe routes to schools not only. But uh, hooks us into the younger demographic of our community, which we never rarely talk about. Uh, but also in light of continuing a strong partnership with the school district, it's very, very important. So leave it as it is, in my opinion.
Anybody else have anything to say there?
I think we heard some feedback from the community around the, uh, connections to the parks, also thinking of kids, because you know, they're walking and biking to the parks. Um, yeah, and we've had some of the past accomplish all of it. They go by a park and they connect to a school and a, and I was like, well, that's, they can do that.
Right.
Be a school, yeah. It's unfortunate.
But there's city parks as well. Anyway, I, I.
Again, this is really about focus. It's not to say we won't have, because a lot of times you have a project that achieves multiple objectives, and that's really cool. We look for those projects. But this really is about focus.
And I'm assuming that TAB still has a gajillion.
There's still.
Senator around schools.
There's still.
Oh, yeah.
I, I.
Because I know they did the Carmen project, and I was struggling to think of what school that was connecting to.
Even if we just did the Boom Story Road connection to the high, to Lake Oswego High School, that's an eleven million dollar. I mean, there's, there's. Tens of millions of dollars of connections to schools we can't fund today. Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So on the construction part of it, that first sentence has a asterisk.
Uh, because that's the way it was written last year.
Right, right, right. No, and I'm, I'm all good with that, but um. We've basically dedicated like two million dollars because we raised the levy. To me, again, this is. I guess it's, it's a goal, but to me, we've already flipped that over to um, sort of institutionalized it. That we're gonna spend a couple million dollars a year. And so is it really a goal of ours? I mean.
That's for you guys to just talk about. I, I will say that when you read the community survey, it's, it's something we hear consistently. So this is another one where you may want it as a goal, not because I mean. I hear what you're saying.
I guess what I'm saying is it's, it's already in process. It's, it's like the, I'm just going back same, the same principles to say, okay, if we have to take out a goal, I'm gonna say, well. That's already in place. We're already doing it. Yes, is it a strategic goal? Yes, we're achieving strategic goals through operational. Things that we put in place. And so.
So I'm not gonna argue the point with you there, except for I will say this is a place where the council has materially shifted, just in the time I've been here. When I got here, the focus in, in terms of transportation investments was pavement quality. And so I think. And you're gonna talk about pavement quality in just a little while, but I, I think the street fund is one you should think of as resource limited. And if you don't, as a council, articulate in your goal-setting process, this is a fifty five thousand foot. Level, the way this is written may not be what you want to convey, because it may be up in that strategic goal, although that's pretty vague. Um, is about if you're making a trade-off between paving roads and building pedestrian facilities, where should we err? And, and we're gonna do both, right? I'm not telling you it's one or the other, but if we had to make a choice, what's your policy preference? So for me, the reason to have something like this is to express policy preference.
Yeah.
How you want it phrased, I think it's up to you.
Okay, because all I'm saying is that. Okay, because all I'm saying is that part of this would be a discussion at the budget level, budget committee level, where if, if we were faced with the task to say, okay, you have six million dollars and you have. You've been putting two million dollars into roadway or to pathways and four million dollars in the path uh paving each year. I mean, that's, that to me is like a, not necessarily a goal.
Build the budget based on the council goals.
Yeah.
So we start the conversation based on the council goals and then at the budget committee member, you might argue about whether or not I got the balance right in the proposed budget. And that has happened the last two budget cycles I've been here is that when I, when you gave me that goal, it said, let's accelerate the construction of pedestrian projects. I put more money into pedestrian projects and less money into paving.
This, this for me is a priority, a way for us to ensure that our, our budget committee, as well as other committees. And projects are prioritized the right way. So I'll, I'll give an example.
I'm good.
If we don't put it there, when we were talking about Blue Heron, it's a perfect example, like, oh, we paved Lakeview because of stormwater runoff into the lake and it's really important to make, you know, that was a priority and it's uh safe routes to schools. So when we're looking at certain projects, it's a way for us to figure out which ones we invest in versus others and. And if we tell the budget committee, like, hey, city council goal is safe routes to schools, it helps them.
Yes.
Put the money where it's most important. So if we don't say it, then it becomes.
I'm just looking at goal count because the next statistic size that we have is gonna be really hard.
Yeah, yeah, I, and if there is any, I should be here, it's this one, this one is a goal. It has, the schools are very important. Yeah, yeah.
Oh, I, a hundred percent, I'm just playing operational things.
No, no, no. The reality is two council meetings a month times, you know, the, the reality is, no matter how many you pick, you only have so much time. Okay, so uh and again, if you pick too many, it's big. Um, the next one is about sort of, I think that's the next step in terms of the work that Will and Erica presented on Stafford McVeigh. One of you wants to have a be a. A funding conversation. Um.
What is that?
Unfortunately, the person who proposed that is not here, so I.
Are we talking about two?
Two, yeah.
I don't even know what that's.
Well, remember, we had, we just had the corridor.
We had a feasibility strategy.
Well, yeah, you just buy lottery tickets.
But remember, it was the short term, the, the crosswalks, a million dollar.
Yeah.
Yeah. And we spent. Sixty, seventy thousand dollars on the plan. We should do something from it.
Yeah, I mean, that, that, there's a good argument to be made around it. Um. The next one is around specific sort of area pedestrian studies. I would not recommend you do McVeigh again because you just did it. Um, and what are we gonna be doing the T S P twenty?
What's a safety study?
So just so you know, a year from now, staff proposal is gonna be that you have a goal around adopting, updating the transportation system plan. So as you think about number three, I think the question is, do you wanna undertake. Area-specific studies separate from your overall transportation system plans. Up to you. The next one is the twenty is plenty speed program, uh, which is allowed under state law.
How, how hard is that?
How hard is twenty is plenty to implement? Um.
Signs.
It's an enforcement problem. Let's be candid.
We have to go to the state to do.
No, no, we have the authority under the state law. Um, the main thing is, once we start putting those signs up, okay, there's two, there's two issues with it you just need to know about. There will be sign proliferation. On your residential streets, because the way the program works, we have to sign and. Basic rule in Oregon is the residential street's twenty five miles an hour. If you depart from it, you have to put a sign up. You're gonna just see a lot more signs. Yeah.
Need speeds.
Like a temporary sign?
No signs that say.
Oh, the speed signs.
Yeah, I don't care. It's just, I just need you to know that there are some places in town where that will be an issue. And the other is people will expect that we're gonna write a lot more tickets.
We won't be.
And we won't be.
No, okay.
Okay, and then the last one is uh increasing investments in road, road rehabilitation. For local lower traffic streets. Do you wanna make a case for this one, why it should be a council?
I've made that case many times. I think we all remember it.
Can we pull the tape? Can we pull up the tape?
Continue to ring that bell.
I think if you guys pick this one, we'll have a more global conversation with you, because I would say we would always prioritize staff level, we would always prioritize arterials and collectors for investment.
Yeah.
It would, it just, but I also understand if you've lived on a street that hasn't seen major investments in fifty years, why you would think that might not be the best use of funds. Okay. Everybody clear on all of these? Any more discussion needed?
Let's vote.
We are close to the end. The people behind me, you said, I couldn't do it in four hours, so they're gonna, they're gonna be wrong. That'll be great. All right.
We're going?
Yeah, although we, we still have the hard work still to do.
Mister Hooper.
This is the sidewalk and pathways one.
Safe route.
We're gonna lead it as, leave it as safe routes to schools is what I heard.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
You have to accept their cookies?
Yeah.
If only they were really cookies.
Are they sweet or?
Let me tell you a story.
Trudy, we don't have your vote yet. What kind of need there?
So now everybody's gonna know your vote. That's not fair.
No one's voted at all, yes.
You don't like this? How would you say it's very low support?
I, I will give you some words.
You can't leave.
All right. Right now I do have that, right? We're not done yet. Yeah. All right, transportation framework word, uh, this is sort of the next state steps, Stafford McVeigh. Interesting. All right, next one. We skipped some?
I think you skipped one, so.
Did we? All right.
Look, we did, but we didn't, uh, I think the next one was.
Oh, it's not in there.
I say, I think we have a, we have a, we have a error. We have no errors, we just.
No secret. We only have opportunities.
Well, the pedestrian safety studies.
The area, yeah, the area-specific pedestrian safety, I think, where we were. There, there they are. Okay, thank you. The next one. Twenty is plenty. Okay, I think we're ready. Okay. And then. Local low traffic streets. Oh, this is, oh, that's fun. I always like that. I always like that. All right, last goal area.
For you to come to me for support.
All right, last one. Uh, the current strategic goal for community development is conserve the community's character, sense of place and quality of life for plenty for change and growth. And remember, we wrote this wording. Uh, originally, when we were dealing with House Bill two thousand and one, and we wanted to make sure that we implemented the middle housing in a way that was consistent with our. Uh, our feelings about how the community's residential neighborhoods are. And then um, this is one where one of you said, this is not really about all the types of land you stuff. This is really about housing. And so could we, before we get into the initiatives, have a conversation about that? I'm seeing a frowny face. I won't call out the person, but the person is in the room, so. I mean, the initiatives do.
This is just primarily about.
You don't think it's only about housing?
I don't, I don't think our strategic goal should be only about housing. That's what you, what the question is.
Did they propose a different goal?
They didn't give me any wordage. This is more, it was more about like the big challenge in this area is really about making sure we have adequate supply of housing.
That is the, that is the initiative.
That is what the initiative is, yes. But this is a broader statement about. About sort of our long-range planning work. It is true that our current body of work is around. I think it's fine.
It's, I think it's fine. We should. I don't know how you can have community development without.
It should be.
Or signing and everything.
Say more, Councilman Boob is gonna make the argument. Why should it be about housing?
No, because you, you know, what, every time you see, all the time we raise the discussion on housing, people talk, even on H B two thousand and one. It's always all the maintaining the community character. This is, when we talk about the cottage clusters. People push back because they think it's gonna change. The neighborhoods and everything, so you know, I. I think we, it's all about housing, you know, for people, you know, to, okay. Or like, what, what do you think when we talk about the sense of place, the quality of life?
It's also about your business districts. What do they look like?
Right.
It's, it's, it's about all aspects of your.
It's about your parks.
Yeah. It's about.
Oh, yeah, but you don't have to change the name of the district strategy to talk about housing. But if you change the name to housing, it limits what you can talk about.
Yeah, I mean, I think this includes housing, but it's not limited to housing.
Yeah, right. Of course, but when you talk housing, you talk about, you cannot go to parks. You cannot feel a sense of, of belonging, of uh, if you don't have a home where you are. All of this, that's all about that, because you. I mean, if you.
What would be your, can you propose the wording of the goal?
Not the wording would be, you know. I, I honestly don't have, and right now, what I can say, what is. No, yeah, but.
It's hard to contemplate.
We could have like two or three council meetings and come up with something.
Okay, so, okay, go ahead.
Let's go for it.
Yeah.
Let's vote.
Yeah.
I do think this broader goal gives you room that sometime in the future, you may have some other uh long-range planning issue that you want to really be front and center. It is true. That the long-range planning issue we're most focused on in twenty twenty four is housing.
Yeah, yeah, but I, what would happen if we um said, uh, what a new six-lane freeway going through Lake Oswego?
I also worked in a timber dependent community in the nineteen nineties where mills were closing, and so there was a lot of. Uh, long-range planning effort going into the future of our industrial areas.
Housing is an element of the goal. The goal is not the, is not housing. The strategic goal is not just about housing.
No, but why you don't have a goal for housing?
Because we do, it's the initiative underneath it.
Yeah, okay, but, okay, because the initiative is, okay, so.
I mean, I, I hear Councilman Booth's point, because this strategic goal really was written around housing.
Yeah.
Absolutely. That was the issue of the, of the day. And I think the issue of the day in the community's mind was, we know we're gonna change because we're gonna be um allowing additional and new development types, but also how do we change? In a way that we wanna change as opposed to in a change where we just let things happen to us. So that's absolutely true, but again, I'm, I'm, I can envision that there could be other long-range planning issues. Where you might have the same concerns, where if, if, like, let's just say, um. Um, Cruz Way, the, the Shorenstein sold all those offensive buildings and all of a sudden we had a new planning thing. You might still. Have some of the same values behind the long-range planning work we would have to do around what happens next out there. So I, I mean, you can go either way. I'm not telling you, I'm just telling you that the, the strategic goal is broad enough that I could say that it could envision. Changing circumstances where it be right about housing. It may not be the preeminent issue.
Right.
That we face forever.
What I also like about the way it is now. Um, it's holistic. It's, it speaks to the holistic view of everyone in Lake Oswego. It's setting, because Councilman Booth.
Yeah.
Most people care about housing, not everybody cares about housing. It's just a fact, like, a hundred percent of people don't care. So what this allows is everybody to have input on the character and the direction of Lake Oswego.
I think everybody, I think everybody cares about housing. There are some that care about high-level housing houses. But there is no one, you cannot live here if you are not in a house.
But my point is, this is, if, the goal as it stands is more inclusive than if we specify.
Yeah, but, but the, the, we were with the boards and commission. What transpired there and what stand out was housing and there is no. I mean, I don't see something that make it solid, that we listen to the communities, like to the board. When we were there, what transpired were housing. Even if it's on the D E I aspect of Lake Oswego, if we had a goal that's on housing. It would make it that we listen to them, because the main thing out there was housing. So we could, we can do what we want, but the people care about housing is the most important thing. You have to have a house. And it's, it's the sense of belonging is like, when one, one of our community member was. Very like creative to create not affordable housing, but uh, what was the word, sustainable housing or something like that, but. I think attainable house, yeah, but if we can, you know, say attain how, I don't know how to frame it, maybe.
Yeah, no, I could write the goal for you. I think for me, that issue, can you go back, all the way back to the preferred future slide? So I want you to think about these strategic goals and you don't, you don't have to, you, you could make it about housing. I mean, if you really think that's the place where the, where the city needs to apply. If he can find it, he's gonna find it. It's really close to the beginning. Here comes. Dun, 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 dun. All right, so remember, all of these strategic goals are, what are the activities the city is gonna undertake to move us towards this? So we're moving towards a safe and welcoming community. Where people of all ages and stages of life thrive and backgrounds and abilities, right? So where we have. A variety of diversity. We have great municipal services. I'm glad we put that first. We have. Places you can eat and shop. We have innovation happening in our business community. We support the amazing schools. Here you see varying housing options. So is, blah, blah, blah. So if you look at this and you say, okay, in all of the. Strategic goal areas, I can draw a line, remember my pyramid? I can draw a line between the activity that takes place under that strategic goal and this. And so it's a, I think in the past, you've drawn, drawn the line between. Essentially, long-range planning. And this, and the question is, I think that you're asking is, is the issue more specific to. Housing availability, housing choice, housing diversity, housing at all income levels, like, whatever, however you want to define it. Is the work of the city specific to housing? I have reservations about that mostly because. For the most part, our engagement in housing production, with, with the exception of some projects, is regulatory.
Yeah.
In other words, I don't have a big pot of money sitting around. To make investments and so.
And we've never done it, even affordable housing, it's other parties that build it for us, so.
We facilitated it.
Yeah, we facilitated, and that's what I meant. I mean, and we have eight affordable housing on the North Anchor. We, we can make. Developers come and happy to build.
We have over two hundred units of subsidized affordable housing in, somewhere in the development process.
Yeah.
So, okay, again, so now can we go back? When I look at this and go, what's the, what's the future you're trying to create, I think, is our, is the action of the city specific to housing or is it about? Planning? Because that, that's the distinction.
Anyway, hundred percent.
And, and housing is in plan.
That's why we're.
Yeah, but, yeah, no.
The planning work we're gonna do in the coming year, the planning work we're gonna do in the coming year is specific to housing.
Okay, guys.
I think that's what I hear everybody's.
Yeah, go ahead, yeah.
Okay. All right, so there's, there's uh one, well, there's two initiatives under this goal and, and one of it is I'm asking for your permission. The first one is. Is to essentially do all the work that we're midstream on. Relative to housing and much of the work there is, is mandated and given what I know is gonna happen in Salem in the short session, there's gonna be more housing mandates. And the reason I'm suggesting that we delay the initiative about overhauling our processes is because until. We, we, I only have so many, we only have. So much long-range planning. And so to do the second part while we're also updating the codes just seems. It intense, so that's why.
It was my, um.
I know.
One that I put on there and I would be more than happy to delay it till twenty twenty five, because I, um, I think we'll be in a better position to do that. Cause I, um, I think we'll be in a better position to do that, but I still think. It's a top priority for the city to, um, as well as the state and the county. To get housing production and, and, and commercial activity.
Speaking for Jessica and Erica who are sitting behind me, so we'll see if I'm, if I'm misspeaking. Um, I think we wanna do this. This, uh, given what we know about the current process, we wanna do this. It's just a question of when do we do it?
And, and I think in all honesty, it's better to have it not in an election year. Um, because otherwise, I think if you attack this, there's going to be, there's gonna be some hard conversations about. How we do things like us, we go to make this happen. And, and I think it's better.
To do it in a, in a, in an odd number of years.
Right, just to have it low, um, so it's gonna take up some oxygen and it, it's better not to have it politically motivated.
Okay. Alright, that sounds good. Alright, you guys ready to vote?
Yep. We need to do the work plan items?
Uh, let's vote on these ones first. I'll just tell you about the work plan items and ask for your permission. Okay, ready? The first one is the housing one. I'm still missing one vote. Okay, great. And then the delay one, everybody. I just, I guess, if, what I'd like to see is, uh. I don't know how you can make a vote on this one.
Let's just.
Anybody not okay with delaying it for a year?
Maybe it's high support for your suggestion on that.
I would say, I would give high support for this suggestion and agree with delaying.
I mean, you can vote on it if, if, if you're okay with delaying it for a year, I'll just bring it back to you a year from now. Okay, that's great. Okay.
Let's finish the vote. We have to finish the vote. We don't want to have Anthony have an incomplete voting tabulation.
Y'all know that Megan does the total score, so, and, and when we take the break, we're gonna flash the score. Okay, so there, um, there were two things. Hey, guys, you're getting so much better. In the past, I would get so many work plan items, like so many, like. Uh, items like, could you paint the picnic shelters green? It was like, yeah, maybe, I don't know, but we don't need to set a goal around that. Um, the first one is around.
Traffic street paving yet?
That was not a work plan. That's policy question. Um, the first one is, uh. Could you take a look at day shelters as part of the emergency plan? We're gonna do that anyway. You know, during this last power outage, people were asking us to open shelters at the schools so they could get warm because they are out of power. There's a lot of reasons why we were not able to pull it off. It's a program of work. If we're gonna do it, I wanna sort of look at what would that program look like?
Then my question then was, what's the difference between shelters and day shelters?
Oh, I think it was, should have been, uh, well, yeah, both, there's also twenty four hour shelters. Right now, our plan for twenty four hour shelters is that if we have a.
Same situation, emergency, emergency only?
Yes. And it would be, right now, we use the Red Cross for shelters, and, but they will only come in if people are displaced. So i- if you can live in your house, even if you have no power, they are not gonna set up shelters. So. We'll take a look at shelters broadly. I will say we are nowhere equipped to offer overnight shelters and probably can't be. Um, but we maybe could help, well, I don't know, but I don't think. It, we could come back and talk to you about what it would take us to be able to do overnight shelters. I don't know that you'll want us to, but we could look at it. Day shelters would be easier, but we'll still have to have stuff.
Well, and, and I think there's a difference between a s- city emergency, um. Like power outages versus if we have a big earthquake where we built a number of public buildings to be stage four or stage. Three, four, five, um, uh, where people aren't going to gather. And I guess it's. I, those are two different emergencies to, to deal with, but that's something that should be part of that dialogue that we have. If it makes it to the list.
I, anyway, I think this is part of our sort of, our plan for updating our emergency ops plans, okay? And already, I don't think you guys need to spend any council time unless we come back to you and say we need to stand up a new program and we'll do that if we need to. Okay, everybody good with that?
Yes.
Um, and then the other one I got that was, uh, was specific to. Um, something we haven't experienced because the weather's been bad, although I saw them today. Um, uh, is the fact that we have this emerging problem with teenagers and e-devices. And I know we all wanna call them e-bikes, but a lot of them are not technically bikes. A lot of them are actually motorcycles. And so, uh, I know the mayor's been working with Councilor Winn about, uh, statewide approach, because the reality is, um. They're regulated by the state. And so no matter what we do, we have to coordinate with state. So. I don't feel like that's something you guys as a council need to spend any time on.
Nope.
Okay, anybody else on this? Okay, so here's what we're gonna do. We're gonna take a break. And Megan is gonna run sort on her spreadsheet and we're gonna find out how close we are to twenty.
She's already almost done.
She is, but I still have to talk to her. And, uh, when we come back, if there's stuff on the bubble, we, we may be fine. Some, sometimes we do this and everything's fine. Uh, if there's stuff on the bubble, we'll talk about it and re-vote. And if there's not stuff on the bubble, we'll be done. Alright, you guys get ten whole minutes, okay? So I actually do have good news, which is you essentially picked seventeen. Seventeen. Now there's four on the bubble, so we're gonna talk about them. Alright, so I'm just gonna read off the ones that you picked. This order in column D is, it doesn't mean. Anything other than that was the order in which they originally appeared on the slide. So please don't read anything into column D. It's just there for me. Uh, the first one is the preparedness goal under public safety. The next one is North Anchor. Uh, the next one is, and there will be other economic development goals in your top seventeen, so don't worry about that. The next one is, uh, is the four sub projects under D E I. The next one is the revised revamped. We agreed on it earlier. Um, adopted facilities and fleet policy that it integrates climate and sustainability. Um, it may also have some C I P elements in it. We'll, I'll, we'll wordsmith.
That's not the retitled one.
Yeah, it is the retitled one. Remember, cause the, the thing that was hanging us up was the integrate climate action and resilient strategies part as opposed to the. Specific work around the C I P, how, uh, well, not so much housing anymore and city facilities and fleets. The next one is the clean energy one, which again, we revamped that one to be, uh, adopt a strategy to increase clean energy use. As opposed to being one focused on education. Next one is, uh, urban and community forestry and the tree code. Uh, the next one is wastewater. Thank you for picking that. Um. Uh, the next one is.
If it wasn't for Anthony.
If it wa- if Anthony. I was worried about, it just, yeah, a lot of things. About your next study session, if you didn't pick that one. And the next one is the Lorac. The next one is, uh, Parks Plan. Those are all ones where you unanimously agreed. So the top ten unanimously agree. Okay. The next one was urban renewal, close to unanimously, one outlier, thought it was just high as opposed to very high. Um, and then, uh, the next one, economic development strategy and a funding strategy for receipt park and then the housing initiatives. Only two outliers there. Or maybe one outlier who, no, it's probably two outliers, I'm guessing. Okay. Uh, the next one is the one related to, uh, sort of, um. Developing a strategy for some kind of presence on the west side. The next one is, uh, the Chamber of Commerce Funding Strategy. And then the next one where you all agree is top seventeen. I would go home happy tonight if we drop, if we do the line there. But I'm not sure all of you would be happy. Okay, any questions about the top seventeen? It's great. It's a great list.
Can't believe we hit seventeen.
Yes. There's a clear gap between number seventeen and number eighteen. Right? There's three points. That's a lot, actually.
What do you mean, eighteen or nineteen?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, I'm looking.
Seventeen and eighteen. Uh, yeah, you're looking at the wrong column. I'm looking at column D. You're looking at column, whatever that is. A cell number. So the next, the four I wanna just sort of work you through are the city financial review. Gas, power, and lawn equipment. Uh, and then branding, storytelling, and then twenty is plenty, okay? You can have three of them. Or not. And remember, um. You can have three or less of them. How about that? That's what I mean to say. You can have one of them, two of them, three of them, but not all four of them. Yes, sir.
I think, and I'm, I'm just gonna call it by the line number, not necessarily the number. So.
Great.
The nineteen financing, the finance review. I think you add it because it's, doesn't take a lot of time for us. It's smart for us to do, just as, as administrators.
With the budget committee.
At the budget committee, yeah. Um, yeah, that's the other point. It's not even done here. It's done a budget committee. Um, and then. I really am a big fan of line twenty-two, which is adopt twenty is plenty.
So Aaron proposes.
I also don't think it takes a ton of council time to do.
Aaron proposes you add back in the long term strategic review of finances and twenty is plenty.
Only because I don't think they take a ton of time.
And then you would defer. Again, remember the other thing I told you before, which I'll say a million times. When you prioritize for the upcoming year, it doesn't mean that you'll never do it. It's just that you've not prioritized them in twenty.
Go after these in twenty-four.
Yeah, I actually, I'm leaning towards great with Aaron, but can I have a question for Amanda?
Absolutely, Amanda, come on up.
When it comes to S A B and kind of what they've done with the, um. Leaf blowers. How they kind of, do they have already kind of an idea of where they'd like, what they, what they would propose to the city on a possible policy or. Is that, I mean, cause I'm kind of, for me, I would love it if, at this point, if it's kind of at that level as they watch Portland, as they kind of. Base what the research they've done, kind of. Have a base idea of when we're ready as a city to say this is initiative, to have that ready to go. So it's not like we have to do a lot of work. And that makes.
I'll say S A B has done a lot of work on this issue, a lot of research and a lot of thinking about it and, and hearing from residents. They don't have a. Policy proposal because where they are currently, um, they've been focusing and recommending that the city focus on education to residents about. You know, the harmful impacts of gas powered equipment, what the electric equipment is that's available. And then they have been. Um, interested in exploring potential financial incentives or other ways that the city can support the transition without requiring it. That's kind of where they've landed lately. So they don't have a detailed kind of policy proposal or, um, you know, we haven't had that city council direction in the past to, um, have S A B kind of. Put together anything more kind of specific. They have talked about bans in the past and, um. There is, you know, differences of opinion on the board, but most recently, they, they've been recommending against a ban. Um, for challenges related to enforcement and equity. So that's why they are really focused on education, um, and, and potential financial incentives. So. You know, I think they could continue to, um, and certainly at the staff level, I'll be closely watching what Portland is doing and, you know, together with S A B can continue to be. Following that process and learning from what's happening there and, um. Understanding based on Portland's experience, what might be possible in Lake Oswego, but they don't have a kind of proposal ready to go at this point. Policy. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, and I didn't think they'd have an actual proposal. I guess I would like to see S A B just continue working. On that and investigating, again, watching Portland. Um, cause I think it's just a matter of time where it kind of does. Come to the, where, you know, we, we will need to make the decision. We will need to have the discussion. And I'm not, I'm not. Coming or saying this with any, like, I think it's a ban or I think it's a seasonal ban or. Yeah, I, I'm not coming with any, what I think that should look like, because I'd be curious. A lot of work needs to be.
I guess the question for me is, I think if you make this a council goal, the public will be expecting you to work on it.
I guess what I'm getting at, again, I'm, I'm trying to lean towards, I would love to see movement on it, but not necessarily a council goal. And I don't know if that's kind of possible, if there's kind of like an informal push with S A B to be kind of keeping their eye on it, to keep the momentum going.
Or could we park it, like we are gonna park the development review issue? I mean, essentially what I asked Councilor Wenland and you all to do is take an issue, I know you guys care about. Because you wanna perform your oversight function as a council and say, we do wanna do this body of work. We understand you wanna do this body of work, but now is not the time. For us to do it because of other priorities or just the level of staff engagement required. We will put it back in front of you a year from now and let you wrestle with it again. I wonder if you wanna do something sort of.
I think that's what I'm kind of leaning towards, but I like S A B to keep it high on their kind of worksheet of what they're working on.
I got.
If that makes sense. I mean, again, that, that doesn't.
Oh, I think they're, yeah, I mean, I, I think their plan is pretty. I, I think there's been a lot of discussion at S A B about this, and I think they've reached a good strategic sort of path. To go along, because I, I do think one of the things, again. I'm not on the ballot next time, but if you bring up something like this, this is going to be a controversial subject. And I think you wanna keep this out of the dialogue, um, and let, and, and, and I think it's hard for us to be a. Uh, one, one person or one city area in the metro area to, um. Do this, and I'd rather see what Portland is, is kind of.
And I guess that's what I'm getting at. It's kind of, I would like us to watch what Portland's doing, but I think maybe do, you again, look at what Portland's doing and watch it. I just want, I think S A B is a great, it's an amazing resource with, you know, the, the members of that board are phenomenal. And I think they're a really good touch point for us. So I just, I kind of would like that to be just, I'm not saying it needs to be their top priority, but higher on their priority list.
Absolutely.
Without it necessarily being a council goal potentially, because again, we're about our give and takes. And I, I say that. I think there's a lot of important environmental issues, um. And amongst other issues with leaf blowers, um, but again, we do have to kind of set our priorities, so.
Yeah.
So, but I just don't want to default.
No, absolutely. I can say with a high degree of confidence that we'll continue to be a part of S A B's public engagement strategy when they're at the farmer's market, when they have the sustainability fair. They're always talking about this and they're gonna be continually getting feedback from residents. So we'll have that data, um, when we might be ready to have a policy conversation.
So.
So what I see at your proposal, what I heard your proposal be is ask them to continue to research. And to monitor Portland's progress. I mean, I do think the advantage of waiting is it's not just that we get to see their code, but maybe we get to see their implementation experience. And then bring it back for council consideration in twenty twenty-five.
Because I think you're gonna have a lot of, I, I think we're gonna have a lot of lessons, potentially lessons learned from the city of Portland. So that when, again, it comes back, we just have a lot more information in front of us. Does it how, what could and should this look like?
Alright, but, I mean, I was.
Yeah, well, we, I think we, it's good that we have a public, some kind of message around this, because when a city in. Belgium talks about banning leaf blowers, we get emails, right? So when Portland bans it. People are gonna be in here coming undone about banning. It's like what we were talking about with Swimply. I mean, we'll be in a reactive posture to it, one hundred percent. We will be inundated when Portland bans it. Inundated. And I would love it. I don't think we're, we have not heard from people yet saying, we really appreciate you not banning these. Yeah, I've never gotten, gotten one of those emails.
Well, I don't think, uh, let me tell you this, there's, I've, I mean, ad hoc totally from a lot of different people that have talked about this in conversations. They're not gonna go public because it's, it's politically, maybe.
Well, they're gonna have to be public. If there's a different perspective, like, if we're hearing one. And, and, and I just think we just have to be, I think this is a really good strategy, but let's not bury our heads. I mean, when Portland passes this ban, people are, well, there will be people in this community that demand that we react to that.
But.
That's right. I mean, I think you have to mentally have yourself prepared, yourselves prepared. That if Portland adopts, I don't think they'll really adopt in ordinance in April, even though that's their current, I don't think it'll be that fast. I could be wrong, but.
But.
But when that happens, you will have folks testifying during public comment and asking you to do it.
I, I, I understand it. Hey, if you guys wanna deal with it, I'm just telling you that it's.
And also, but I, I also think we should speak in a place of, of love, of our community, uh. Place that if it's harmful to our community, we should not wait Portland, we should not wait the ballot. That people vote me out because I defend something great. I would be very happy because I'm not, I'm doing things for the community. For the safety and we have to have the, the courage and the love of this community. That's the. What we're doing, there are things that are important. We need a nice library that all the people, we need our people to be safe. Blowing leaves with powers that hurt people. Even if it's, because in America, we have the tendency to always have, like the Super Bowl, I support the forty Niners. Even if they don't play well. We should not, it shouldn't be like that. We are leaders of a community. We have to speak from a place of love. Just that, nothing, not agendas or stuff. Does it hurt people? If it's a yes, we should ma- make it. Does it hurt people? If it's a yes, we should ma- make it legal. That's it. That's simple. It's like the, I wasn't, I didn't agree with having people use legal, like legalize some drug, drug and stuff. Even though maybe the party I support defends certain things, it's not, I don't, I see America, that's my party. And I see Lagos figure, that's my party. They don't vote for me because I, thank you, I'm gonna go rest. But I believe that this is lethal, that's not good. We shouldn't ban it. That's it. That's the thing.
People claiming that pickleball is killing them too.
No, yeah, no, 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 that's a different thing. Pickleball, you could say people, let's go. And you know my position on pickleball, we are people, they can go find something else. Here, you are blowing this thing, it's lethal, and you are adding to the carbon footprint. Everybody in Lagos, you go, that's blowing this gas-powered things have the possibility to buy an electric one. We all, I, I'm not rich. My lawnmower is electric.
You know the difference between a gas, the purchase to, uh, have a gas, uh, blower versus a electric blower for a commercial use?
What's the difference?
A gas one is four hundred dollars and an electric one was twenty-two hundred, I think.
Yeah, but you buy it once and you are saving the environment. That's it. It has no price. The problem is also
So, okay, I don't wanna get, actually, actually, I think part of the problem is that you're, you're in the weeds on the policy issue. The question is whether or not you're gonna take this up in twenty twenty-four. I hear Rachel making a proposal that it, that we, we deliberately, that you all deliberately asked SAB to continue research and to evaluate Portland's experience. What I like about that idea is that actually the implement, the enforcement challenges of implementation of any regulation are the thing I'm actually the most concerned about. And if you think you guys are gonna get phone calls or visitors from people who want you to ban it, the second you pass a ban, the police department is gonna, beginning to getting calls about needing to go out and issue citations. And then the calls are gonna come about, uh, in about why did you give me a ticket? And so I think that for us, being able to observe Portland's experience in enforcing whatever regulations would be extraordinarily valuable. But what I hear is a, a sense of like, we're not postponing, we're not ignoring, we're not pretending this issue is not real. We're going to our advisory board and saying, we want you to watch what's happening, and we want you to bring us a strategy that we can put on our list in twenty twenty-five. That's what I hear you say.
I agree with that. Not, not, if, not only, it's also, why do we have boards and commissions? We don't let them do the work and trust them to do the work.
Okay, so we're gonna ask them to do research, to monitor, and to bring you a work plan so you can take this issue up next year.
Yeah, okay. Can I ask a question about the, uh, the number, line twenty-two, adopt the twenty is plenty? Can we research that? Or are you basically saying that we're going to do that? Because if you're gonna do that, that's not gonna take any council time.
But it's
It takes council direction. It's a policy choice, um, that you guys have to do it. You, we can't, we can't administratively do it. You have to do it.
Well, but you think you're going to open it up to the community to make sure that the community, I mean, that, for every, this is a major policy change. And then the other part is that, um, we're going to have to hire more staff because, uh, in order to implement all this stuff. I, I'm telling you right now that you can put all these laws in, whether we're gonna have adherence to it or not, or whether we're going to enforce it or not, or how we're going to do it, um, I think that has to be a community conversation. Or we have to have answers from staff to say, okay, this is how we're going to handle it. Um, because this is, and I'm, it's not that I'm not in support of this, I'm just looking at the logistics of you, you, this is a categorical change to people, I mean, look at all the emails we get about South Shore and different places around town where people are going, you know, down, up, or down, all kinds of places.
A work plan that would have all that stuff in it, and I, I, Tabir, I assume, would be in the lead. But yeah, I mean, we'll have to do community engagement. As I mentioned before, we'll have to sign every street. And it's, uh, and then, yes, of course, you guys will have to be the ones that actually enact the program. This is not, uh, council sets a goal and staff does it kind of thing. It's, there'll be, there's requirements under state law.
I saw this was on tabs that were
But why it's on twenty-two and we like, it's the number twenty-two?
It's not number twenty-two, it's number twenty.
If you're looking at my line numbers versus
That, that's the cell number?
Oh, yeah, okay.
Okay, so, but what I heard Aaron proposes is that we take up the strategic review of the city finances and the twenty is plenty, and that we postpone essentially for future years, the other two.
I agree with that.
I'm good.
You are there, and that means I'm gonna let you have one more break before your four-thirty study session starts, except for, okay. So, as a reminder, so you've picked nineteen. It feels like a nice robust round list, too. It feels like you've got something, some work to do in a lot of different areas. You haven't overemphasized one area or neglected anybody. And it feels also to me like a nice mix of actual physical projects versus policy level work, if that makes sense at all. Because I, I always think it's nice to not just do policy or not just do
I, I do think that what's really nice is that there are several items on here that are almost done. So next year, we're gonna have a lot of
I think you will. Actually, I think you will have more room to take up new staff next year. Um, so, uh, I appreciate your continued focus on some of these things so that we can finish them. Okay, so what will happen next is I will send these out to the departments or the key staff people. They will develop a work plan. I'll bring the goals back to you for adoption before the work plans come back. Your first quarter report will be to review the work plans. So some of the questions that you all asked today, like, how would we go about doing that, or what would it take in terms of resources? That will be covered in the work plans. In some cases, the work plans are really detailed because we know exactly what we're doing, like with Parks Plan twenty forty. In some cases, the work plans are kind of high level because we gotta do some research to scope the project first. Makes sense? That's what's happening next. Good job. All right, I always like at the end of any retreat to say what went right, what went wrong.
Are we making some errors now in the campfire?
What'd you like about how we did goal setting? Everybody gets to talk here. What'd you like about how we did goal setting? What do you mean by that? What it flowed pretty well?
I feel like Probably not like procedurally correct, but, um, you know, whenever we're together, we're always like waiting for our time to speak, and we're really good about that. Um, but I feel like today, we had a just a good flowy conversation, and we weren't like procedurally correct, like, you know, getting called on, but it didn't devolve into complete chaos.
Yeah, great. It's true. Thanks to y'all for being flexible about the whole snowstorm thing. And Martha being sick, so thanks. All right. Anything else go well?
I just wanna say, I wanna thank everybody because I think we can have disagreements and discussions, and still, at the end, we all come together. So I appreciate that about each one of you. Um, I appreciate the staff coming and giving us clarity when we needed it, and Martha, you always kind of help keep us in line and bring us back to center when we need to.
I make that face at you.
So, um, that's appreciated.
I love you, Miss Anne.
All right, I appreciate that you all did your homework. Thank you for all doing your homework, uh, doing it in advance. I, I like the fact that you guys all have thought about what you wanna accomplish before we're in the room, but we're not making stuff up, so.
I think, I, I appreciated that there actually were a lot fewer goals to consider this year, that I think we're focused. We are all on the same page of, of things that we need to get done. And so I, I feel like these are in some ways interim steps on a lot of these big projects that we're working on. And so it just remains, as we stay focused, we get things done, so.
And no one raised peaky stuff.
Power stayed on. I won't write that down. Thank you for laughing. All right, anything that you would change?
Well, I like, I mean, it's okay to have the, that we do it in this room. I will say that it, um, uh, to have it and to have, um, staff around the table, all the department heads. I appreciate that even more because I can, I can't read half of them because of your boards that are in the way, but, um, uh,
They, they said that they're on purpose.
I know, and they all said, other than for Melissa, who gets the, uh, gold star for sitting at least up in the front, everyone else is in the back. So, um, we know that, um, who gets the bigger office next time.
All right, I'm gonna write that down. Um, I think our hope is to have it in the remodeled clubhouse next year. I think we'll like being, and I, we want it to be an ACC.
Yeah, I, absolutely.
Uh, so get out of the council chambers.
Right. For those who have not taken a tour of the new facility of, under construction, get on the next tour because, uh, it's going to be exciting. LoRaC is going to be exciting, and the golf course is going to be wonderful.
Check the weather before you go next time, though. Hope you guys all brought your rainbows that day. All right, anything else you'd change? Anything else you'd do differently next time?
Don't do it before city council meeting.
No snowstorm.
Right.
I'll write that down. No winter weather.
This has been a good process, and, and the, and the way that we've done the board and commission input into it was very helpful, seeing that abbreviated, what they're working on. It's great. And now, um, they'll be able to take, we discussed here today, once we adopt and put their plans, uh, forward. And I think our engagement with them has been good.
Yeah. All right, I'm gonna write that down.
Sequence is really good, and the boards and commissions format and the way it worked out was really good.
I think they liked it, too. So, big thanks to Quinn and to Madison and to the mayor for, for thinking about updating that. Yeah. Yeah, good job, you guys. All right, if you want, you can have until four twenty-nine before you have to be back in your chair.
Wow.
All right, I know, so generous.
And it's this next meeting optional? Is that what Anthony told us?